Good evening and welcome to the City of Hayward Planning Commission meeting for May 22, 2025. We're holding a hybrid meeting with some participants in the council chambers and others who have joined virtually via Zoom. This meeting is being webcast on Comcast TV Channel 15 and livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel and on the city's website. This meeting is called to order at 7:04 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Allen, could you please call roll?
Good afternoon. Commissioner Franco Clausen, absent. Commissioner Goodbody?
Here.
Commissioner Hammond?
Here.
Commissioner Lowe?
Here.
Commissioner Myers?
Here.
Commissioner Stevens?
Here.
Chair Hardy?
Present. We will now open public comments on non-agenda items. The public comments section provides an opportunity to address the Planning Commission on items not listed on the agenda. The Commission welcomes comments and requests that speakers present their remarks in a respectful manner within established time limits and focused on issues which directly affect the city or are within the jurisdiction of the city. As the Commission is prohibited by state law from discussing items not listed on the agenda, your item will be taken into consideration and may be referred to staff for further action. Speakers shall not use threatening, profane, abusive, or abusive language which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of a Commission meeting. The city is committed to maintaining a workplace free of unlawful harassment and is mindful that city staff regularly attend Commission meetings. Discriminatory statements or conduct that is hostile, intimidating, oppressive, or abusive, or per se disruptive to a meeting will not be tolerated. Ms. Allen, do we have any public comments at this time?
There are none online.
Thank you. I will now close public comments and we will move on to our action items. The Commission will permit comments on each item that is called for public hearing. Please submit a speaker card if you haven't already if you wish to speak on a public hearing item. For Agenda Item Number One, the decision of the Planning Commission is final unless appealed. The appeal period is 10 days from the date of the decision. If appealed, a public hearing will be scheduled before the City Council for final decision. Item Number One, PH25022, is a public hearing for the STACK Data Center. Major Site Plan Review and Administrative Use Permit Application to Construct a Three-Story Data Center, Generator Yard, Substation, Switching Yard, and Related Accessory Structures in Site Improvements on an Approximately 11-Acre Site Located at 26062 Eden Landing Road and Review and Certify the Project's Initial Study, Mitigated Negative Declaration, and Mitigation Monitoring, and Reporting Program Prepared by the California Energy Commission. Staff have a presentation for this item.
Yes, we do. I'm joining online, so first just want to make sure that you are seeing the title slide before you and that you can hear me okay.
We can hear you, but we do not see the slides yet.
Oh, okay, let's try sharing again. Hang on one second, and Jeremy, please stand by. I might have you share instead. Let's see, let me try again. Okay, on my screen, it looks like it's sharing. How does it look on everybody else's screen?
Looks great.
I can see it on mine.
Okay. Well, good evening Commissioners. Elizabeth Blanton, Senior Planner. I'm joining you all virtually this evening because I'm actually currently on vacation in Pennsylvania, visiting my sister's family. So from afar, I'm here to present the STACK Data Center project, which is requesting approval of a major site plan review and administrative use permit application. You may recall that this project was previously brought before the Commission at a work session back in November. Since then, the project application has been deemed complete by staff and the environmental analysis process has concluded. So as a result, tonight, we'll be asking the Commission to make a decision on this application. There we go. The project site is located just south of Highway 92 on Eden Landing Road in the middle of the city's industrial area. And as you can see on this map, it's fairly close to the Shoreline Interpretive Center, which is indicated by the yellow dot, as well as sections of the Bay Trail, which are indicated by the dotted lime green lines. Zooming in on our map, the site itself is approximately 11 acres and has frontages on Eden Landing Road, Production Avenue, and Investment Boulevard. It has a general plan land use designation of industrial corridor and a zoned industrial park, which allows for data centers by right, along with a range of other industrial and office uses. Currently, there's a vacant light industrial office park with nine single-story buildings on the site, which would be demolished in order to accommodate the proposed project. Staff has heard from one of the now former tenants of this office park that they were concerned that they would be unable to find affordable office space elsewhere in the area. But in response, the applicant team provided some financial relief to support this tenant's relocation efforts. I'll also note here, while we're looking at this map, that staff has also heard from a couple of the restaurants in that little commercial center that's right across Eden Landing Road, who are concerned about the potential impacts that the construction of the project and that the limited number of future employees would have on their businesses. And we'll address that more in just a bit. So this site plan rotates our orientation slightly so that north and Highway 92 are now toward the left of this image. The main building on site here, shown in orange, would be a three-story, 310-square-foot data center that is about 100 feet tall. To support the project's significant power needs, there would also be an onsite substation and switching station along Eden Landing Road and a large generator yard with 28 emergency diesel generators facing Production Avenue. Additional site improvements would include a guard station, security fencing, new landscaping and buyer retention basins, and outdoor seating for employees. The design of the primary building includes a mix of concrete, metal, and textured elements. This rendering is a view from the corner of Investment Boulevard and Production Avenue. And as you can see, the building incorporates a number of elements from the city's industrial design guidelines, including varied wall planes and projections that help to visually break up the overall massing of the building. In this rendering, you can also see some of the screening that will help mask the view of that large generator yard facing Production Avenue. And in addition, the onsite substation, which will be visible from Eden Landing Road and Highway 92, will also be screened. As shown in this rendering, the screening design has evolved since the last time you saw it in November, but the curved blue slats remain, and again, they're meant to be evocative of the nearby Hayward shoreline. Now, while this project as proposed meets most of the requirements of the Industrial Park Zoning District, as you might recall, there are two exceptions that the applicant is requesting. The first is a reduction in parking. Data centers are defined as an office use in our zoning ordinance, which means that they're required to provide one parking space for every 250 square feet of building. Given the square footage of the proposed project, this would require over 1,200 parking spaces. Now, however, the city's parking regulations do allow for exceptions in cases when a user's parking demand would be significantly lower than the required number of spaces. So it's illustrated in the parking memo that's attached to the staff report. The proposed data center would have a maximum of 33 employees and up to 12 visitors per day. So thus, the 68 parking spaces that the application proposes would be more than enough to accommodate the project's daily parking demand. The applicant team is also requesting a second exception related to building height. The building's, uh, main building, I should say, its proposed 100-foot height is taller than the 75-foot maximum height allowed by the Industrial Park Zoning District. Now that said, the city's code does allow decision-makers to approve taller buildings in this zoning district if the project includes significant and sufficient public benefits or amenities to warrant that increase in height. So the applicant team has met with staff, the Council Economic Development Committee, the HASPA Board of Directors, and this Commission over the past two years to discuss what should be included in the project's public benefit package to justify that requested height increase. As a result of these discussions, the public benefits package has increased from $900,000 in the initial application to the $2 million that you see today. Now, this is an increase from the $1.5 million public benefits package that was described in the staff report as just this week, the applicant team elected to increase their proposed contributions further in response to a letter from the HASPA Board of Trustees, which was also included as an attachment to the staff report. So this latest proposed $2 million public benefits package would be divided among various city and regional projects and funds, including $500,000 to HASPA, $300,000 each to the city's Gateway Marker Project, and a Small Business Grant Program, $200,000 each to La Vista Park, the school district, and a CIP solar project at the city's water resource recovery facility, $150,000 for nearby bike and pedestrian projects, $100,000 for the CIP STACK Community Center project, and $50,000 for new signage for that adjacent Eden Landing Shopping Center that I was mentioning earlier. The revised conditions of approval that were distributed earlier this afternoon in the documents received after Agenda Publishing Packet reflect these updated figures. Now again, this proposed public benefits package is based on feedback that the applicant team has received to date. At their June meeting last year, the Council Economic Development Committee recommended that the public benefits package include hosting an ongoing food truck court nearby, a contribution for the STACK Community Center, and support for small businesses. All of these are included in the latest public benefits package, with the exception of the food truck court, as staff from the East Bay Regional Parks District recommended against that idea based on where we are talking about putting it. In addition, the CEDC wanted to see further enhancement of the project's architectural elements and artistic screening, especially where they would be visible from Highway 92. At the HASPA Board of Trustees meetings in February and October of last year, the board recommended a significant increase to the public benefits budget to cover a wider variety of green and sustainable projects, including contributions toward the renovation of the nearby Shoreline Interpretive Center and towards bike and pedestrian infrastructure, city parks, tree plantings, and educational programs. Again, contributions for all of these items are included in the latest public benefits package, and in direct response to a recent letter by the HASPA Board, the applicant team increased the overall package total from 1.5 million to 2 million, which now includes a half-million-dollar contribution directly to HASPA to be used at their discretion towards their projects aimed at shoreline resiliency and education. At a work session with this body last year, the Commission, again, was generally supportive of the project, but recommended increased funding for the Shoreline Interpretive Center, Eden Landing Ecological Reserve, Hayward Unified School District, Russell City Art Project, and the Hayward Fire Department. In addition, the Commission recommended ongoing funding for the Small Business Grant Program to ensure its long-term success. And then finally, the Commission asked the applicant to incorporate more public art and EV charging stations. So again, many of these items are represented in the applicant's final proposal for the public benefits package and in the project design itself in the case of public art and EV charging stations. Now, this project is subject to the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, and an initial study and mitigated negative declaration with the mitigation monitoring and reporting program was prepared. Per state requirements for projects that qualify as a small thermal power plant, as this one does, the California Energy Commission served as the lead agency in charge of preparing the ISMMD. The city, on the other hand, served as a responsible agency under SEQA, assisting in the review of draft chapters. The ISMMD was available for public review from March 21 through April 21, and the final document was certified by the CEC earlier this month on May 8. Tonight, if the Planning Commission decides to approve this project, you will also be required to certify and accept the ISMMD that the CEC prepared, which is attached to the staff report. So in conclusion, staff finds that the project is consistent with all applicable city codes and requirements, including the general plan, zoning ordinance, and industrial district design guidelines. We further find that by increasing the overall public benefits package from $900,000 to $2 million and adjusting the contributions contained within, the proposal has adequately responded to the feedback provided to date, including from this body. While there were some comments received in opposition to the project citing general concerns about the environment related to a data center and concern about impacts to nearby small businesses, the proposed project includes a number of sustainability measures and public benefits aimed at addressing these concerns. Moreover, staff also received several letters and correspondence in support of the project. Staff supports the requested parking reduction given the uniquely low staffing needs of a data center. And finally, staff appreciates the unique architectural design of this structure, especially the creative artistic screening of the substation facing Highway 92 and Eden Landing Road. So as a result, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the proposed major site plan review and administrative use permit application and certify the project's SEQA document. This concludes staff's presentation, but if the chair will allow, the applicant team has also prepared a short presentation that they'd like to share before we open it up for questions and discussion.
Thank you, Senior Planner Blanton. Yes, if the developer would like to go ahead and make their presentation, that'd be great.
Thank you so much. Great to be here this evening. Thank you so much for having us. A very exciting night for us and all of our partners. Have a lot of stakeholders, partners, consultants with us, and some on the phone, so if questions come up, I may be phoning a friend later. Thank you so much. STACK Infrastructure, to review a bit, we are a data center developer. We specialize in building data centers globally, and data centers really help to power the internet, you know, the brick and mortar of the cloud. This is the, the nice-to-haves, like the virtual presentation, retrieving the documents from the internet that we're all using. It's also the need-to-have, such as air control, such as police dispatch, such as our medical records in the event of emergency. Next slide, please. STACK is a global data center group. We focus here today in the Bay Area, in Hayward, but we have a presence across the globe. This is, this is where the internet crisscrosses the world and creates the cloud. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, STACK has a significant Bay Area presence here. We intend to grow in Hayward. We're also in Santa Clara and San Jose with two sister projects as well. Next slide, please. As Elizabeth was mentioning, and with great partnership, very proud of working with Elizabeth's staff, who's been tremendous through the process, as much as all of you have, and continuing to refine the project, we really found ourselves a great home and intend to grow here in the industrial and technology corridor to really help to bring a healthy blend of information and technology jobs to the manufacturing jobs that are there. This is to really move in alignment with Hayward's 2040 general plan and really help to bring that healthy blend and to continue to attract additional corporate development in the area. Next slide, please. Here we see an updated rendering that you may be seeing for the first time, but this is just a visual to see how we really integrate into the neighborhood. You can see right in the middle, this is our SVY03A project. Thank you so much. It, it's hard to see too because it blends in. You know, although we are asking for a height modification, we are relative to some of the other buildings, especially across the highway, and really look to integrate into the, into the neighborhood. I think the biggest part that helps us to stand out is our enhanced architectural designs that we're really proud of. I'd also like to call out here, it's hard to see, you might be able to see it easier on your visuals, but we will be building a switching station and a substation on site. This is really to help enhance the electrical infrastructure of the network, as well as help to provide our facility with electricity. This switching station will also enhance the robustness of the already PG&E network, switching station network, to help provide another breaker point, to help in case in the event of an outage upstream or downstream. This allows other networks inside of this distribution and transmission network to stay online in the event of an emergency. This provides that additional breaker position. What you can't see here is additional infrastructure that's underground, some upgrades to the water infrastructure that we'll be making as part of our project. In collaboration with our civil engineering team, we're actually going to be doing some ride-along trenching for our water improvements to not disrupt any of the neighbors and make sure that this is actually an upsized, you know, our upgrade actually calls for a 10-inch main, this will be a 12-inch main, to provide for future expansion in the area as well for future businesses or for future water usage. Next slide, please. Just to hit on a few of the, the benefits that we bring to the table, really excited to be creating approximately 380 union jobs for our construction site. We also anticipate having around 41 onsite jobs throughout the project, and we have a job multiplier here with about 200 indirect jobs that we'll be supporting in the data center. To go down to the conformance and consistency that Elizabeth mentioned, this is truly in alignment with the 2040 general plan, as well as some of the green building ordinances and revenue creation that, that Hayward has really outlined. Some of our off-site improvements include pedestrian network improvements, traffic calming measures, and we also do work with alternative work schedules. This is a 24-hour facility, so not everyone's coming all at one time to help reduce the amount of traffic that we bring to the area. With our mitigative negative declaration that was led by the CEC, we were able to complete our SEQA process and also be granted our small power plant exemption. This also includes our mitigation monitoring and reporting program to help establish best practices through the course of development, what to do in each scenario, and really mitigate all concerns there. We will be 100% renewable, and this goes towards STACK's Global Net Zero Program. For landscaping, we'll be replanting 55 of the trees. We'll be starting off with our 18 EV chargers right off the bat, and we'll be reducing our parking stalls to about 71 or less. Just to hit on some of the infrastructure that I was talking about, that switching station, the water infrastructure upgrades, approximately, you know, seven, $70 million worth of infrastructure upgrades that will be coming here to the City of Hayward. Next slide, please. Additionally, just to chat on some of the additional public benefits here, this is a letter from Dustin to the City Council identifying some of the key areas to help city close some of the funding gaps that we have in the general plan. The areas that we highlighted here was property tax, sales tax, and utility user tax. Next slide, please. When we look at the property taxes, for example, each $1 that goes into property taxes, Hayward gets 16 cents on that dollar. Last time we were here, we were discussing how we believe Hayward has a pretty significant deal relative to some of the neighboring jurisdictions, and then we'd like to do a little comparison. So next slide, please. This is just some help on, kind of by the numbers, and what we did here was try to bring through one of the questions that we had during our work session of, what if this project was in San Jose? You know, do we really have a better deal than other jurisdictions? And what we did here with one of our consultants, Magnum, was to really showcase that if this project was dropped down in the exact same acreage, the exact same project, the difference is, is quite significant. And we'll just walk through some of these, the tax revenue streams that we're looking at here from left to right. From left to right, we have the secured real estate property taxes. This is the traditional property tax that we all think of. As we go to the, to the right here, the next one is the unsecured property taxes, not as typical for a lot of projects, but these are the computers, the mechanical equipment to help cool the facility. These are also taxed as well. These are, this is equipment that is inside the building and considered personal property or unsecured property. As we continue to the right, all of that equipment that we're buying is coming to Hayward, and Hayward gets a piece of that sales tax. The computers that are in the facility are also refreshed, just like the computers here, just like the computers that we have at home or in our work lives. You know, every one to five years, we'll need to refresh these computers, so the sales tax revenue continues to regenerate. About 20% of the facility will be replaced every year on a rolling basis, just as we continue to update and refresh, and that produces a huge tax revenue center for Hayward for sales tax. The last one, which is one that we don't always think about, but this is for the utility usage tax. This is the tax on electricity. And so again, as we go across all of these brackets here, we can see how, if this project was in San Jose, Hayward does have a, a significant higher figure across the board, to where we look at, when the project is fully stabilized, we can anticipate Hayward to anticipate about $9 million per year indirect revenue. And by the numbers, that's about an increase of 2% on the total revenue for the City of Hayward. As we look down at San Jose, it's about $7 million, so significantly about a million and a half higher per year that Hayward can anticipate to receive instead of if, if this project was in San Jose. Next slide, please. You've seen this one, this is again, we're just showing off how beautiful this project is. I'm really proud of our architectural team, and again, challenge from Mayor Mark Salinas during the CEDC meeting and from you all to continue to improve the design. I, I can say without a doubt, this is the most attractive data center that I personally entitled and that we've stood up here on the West Coast or in the Americas. Very impressive. This is breaking up the facade, using different architectural features, some, some tricks that our architects have, have implemented, so not only louvers, but you know, fake windows to help disguise the building, not as a data center, but you know, perhaps as a, as an office building. Next slide, please. And then the screening, again, from you all continuing to iterate, this is the concept design that you all saw during the, the working session and really providing some feedback. We continue to enhance that, integrate on the wave, and next slide, please. And brought us to reality of what we anticipate to build and what we anticipate to submit a building permit on. Again, this is the integration of a wave into the screen, and as we see here, it does have a straight line at the top, but as we continue our designs with PG&E, we hope to be able to create some more undulation on the top of that to make the interpretation of the wave more evocative. We wanted to show, you know, no pun intended, but the high watermark of how tall it could be, what it could look like, but we continue to work to improve our design even after this meeting tonight. And this screen is something that we're really proud of and an area for us to really bring our artistic expression to. This could have been, you know, corrugated metal paneling, and we wanted this to be something that we could all be proud of every time we look by. You know, this is a project that we all worked on together. Next slide, please. And then again, we'll continue on looking at the screen. This is a, a different screen this time, as Elizabeth was mentioning, and this is for our generators. So not only are our generators, these are the cleanest generators that exist, these are Tier IV generators using biodiesel, reduced emissions, and scrubbers, basically kind of like converters on these, these diesel generators. These have enclosures, so each of these generators are within their own little room. So even before we put the screen on, if you're walking along that fence line, the, if you hear testing or anything like that, it's going to be like a vacuum, you know, less than 70 decibels, less than noisy, less than ambient noise, or conversation, you know, someone in the next room over having a lot of conversation, that's what it's going to sound like. If you're driving by in a car, you're not going to hear it. And to enhance that, we also hide these so that someone driving by wouldn't even know that they're there. We have, we have these screenings all the way up to the top of the stack, so you can't even tell you're going to see the screen. And we wanted to also make this just not a standard screen, but again, different colors to break up these facades, you know, these are longer areas, so we use the checker, we use different colors to help to break this up, to help distract the eye, so it's not just one monolith of color. Next slide, please. And here's just a view of the entrance, this is controlled facility, 24/7, only people that are supposed to be there will be there to make sure that we have that, we have a controlled access, this is access control building. And again, just another view from another perspective to show that, you know, there's really no kind of backside of the building. A lot of buildings nowadays will have the front facade that's enhanced, but the backside, the side neighbors, they don't get a pretty view. We wanted to make sure that from every angle, this is truly a gorgeous building. Next slide, please. Coming back to the public benefits, as Elizabeth was mentioning, I won't go through them all again, but really an iterative process that we're really proud to be a part of. STACK is always active in our communities. Down in San Jose, we just helped out with the Biriessa Art Festival down there, and so we, we are proud to be members of the communities that we operate in across the Americas and across the globe. This provided us with really a unique opportunity, where earlier we were kind of talking about some of the apples, you know, the infrastructure, the, the taxes. We didn't talk about the impact fees, the schedules that we'll have, as each city does, that we'll be contributing to, but that's really the apples that we look to other cities at. This is the orange. This is where we have the opportunity to create an enhanced package for, for Hayward and really bring something that no other city has. You know, San Jose doesn't have the opportunity to receive these type of public benefits. They have a different system, they have higher height limits, which don't provide the opportunity for us to engage with the community for all of these causes. And the way that we look at this is, this is really the start of the conversation for us to get together with these organizations, begin the discussions, and then as the years go on and as we continue to work with our neighborhoods and work with our And then as the years go on and as we continue to work with our neighborhoods and work with our stakeholders, see if there's ways for us to also help out along the way with different opportunities, as I mentioned, the Biersa Art Festival. Next slide, please. That brings us to the end of the conclusion of our discussion. Again, would like to really thank planning staff and you all for helping us along the way from the project that we started with to the project that we are today. Truly an iterative process that we're so proud of and excited to be a member of this community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Great. So now we will move on to commissioner questions. This is a time for us to ask staff and the developer any questions and we'll reserve our comments for later. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any questions? Commissioner, good body.
Thank you, Chair. I have a question for the applicant. So there were some comments about the concern about making it a little bit more sustainable. And I was wondering if it was possible to phase in or do a hybrid with battery storage or, because I understand that it's all diesel.
Correct. Yeah, these are all tier four diesel generators using renewable fuel. Batteries are something that we did explore. Unfortunately, we do not have a lot of space onsite and to ride our redundancy for power. This is, the only time the generators come on is when we test them, just like an old car to make sure they work when it turns on or if the grid goes out. So the only, again, the only time those generators are coming on is in the event of the grid going out. Talking with our partners over at PG&E, our adjacent substations have had zero downtime in the past decade. So these are only just in case. Unfortunately, we're not able to integrate batteries into our building program here, just given the site constraints. The batteries that are on, that would be required to provide this amount of electricity would take up significantly more space than were afforded on this site.
Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you. I just have a quick question. Why three floors and not four? Why not make it taller? Is there like an economic sweet spot between size and height?
Great question. Yeah, for us, as we were working through this project, a two-story project was not economically feasible. And so we came forth with the plan to go with a three-story project. Looking at the incremental increase from 75 feet to 100 feet, we felt like that was an area that we could be approachable with this public benefit package and with precedent from the project across the street, across Highway 92. At about 91 feet, we felt the relative height would be achievable. We actually have built projects that, we have one in Santa Clara, that's a four-story project. And so we, at the time, came forth with a three-story project. But given the relative size to some of the other projects in the neighborhood, felt like a three-story project was more appropriate. And that's where we came forth with our project.
But if you looked at market forces, something much taller would be a reasonable thing for your firm to tackle?
Correct.
And then just, can you summarize the benefits this project makes? I understand it has a huge tax benefit to the city. There's impact fees paid, which are standard. You are also making a lot of infrastructure improvements that go beyond the value of what your project is generating. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Can you estimate what that value is?
Yeah, we think about $70 million for the infrastructure improvements. That's between the electrical grid infrastructure improvements for the switching station as well as the water infrastructure that I was mentioning earlier and really upsizing that beyond our project itself.
And then finally, I think you mentioned this last time you were here. In the event of a power issue in California, does data centers like this and the one across the highway provide auxiliary power to the grid?
The, our company has never participated in it. But a few years ago, Gavin Newsom, during a major power shortage, did call around to data centers in the area to ask them to shed load off of the, off of the grid. Santa Clara has also done this itself. Again, our company has never participated in that, but that's something that has happened historically to help prevent issues. Yep. And our project is actually on what's considered the transmission network as opposed to the distribution network. So our electricity isn't necessarily competing with local businesses or local homes. And so that program is a little bit separate. And we actually helped to enhance the transmission network through our switching station, which also provides for enhanced grid reliability down at the distribution level.
But conceivably, that could be another benefit should it ever come to pass. We can't promise it today, but it potentially could be in the future.
Correct. Yeah. If Governor Newsom wants to call on us and need us to help out, that's something that we would of course consider.
And then, so finally, you own the data center, you lease space in the data center. So many, many users are going to come in and develop many different resources and applications that are going to serve us as we occupy the area. That could be AI, it could be everything, correct?
That's correct. Yep. STACK infrastructure purchased this property actually back in 2020 and will continue to be a long-term owner of this facility and landlord. We are ourselves a developer of the building itself, just like an office building would have a developer that builds the shell itself and then leases out different space inside for users. Very similar.
And then just to confirm, when these type of resources, these availability centers are located near the centroid of populations, it improves the reliability of our digital experience?
Absolutely. Yes, this absolutely helps to reduce latency. That's one of the biggest things that we'll experience is faster internet as well as reliant internet to other areas within our community. Faster ability to reach that as well as having that locally in the event of a course of a natural disaster.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lo?
Hi. Thank you very much for your presentation and also for the presentation of staff. I said a couple of questions. I wanted to find out the diesel generators, is natural gas, would that be less pollutant and was that explored as an option?
We did look at different options for this specifically. We do not have natural gas transmission nearby. And natural gas is also used for a lot of facilities to help bridge the gap to the grid when grid electricity is not available. So people will have a natural gas essentially powered plant in their backyard. We wanted to lead and of course, start with electrical power from the grid to reduce our emissions. And again, these generators are only there for an emergency and also do help to provide that resiliency in the event of an emergency. So we're not using any natural gas onsite for power generation or redundancy. And our generators are, you know, state of the art, as clean as it gets and using renewable fuel.
And I know there's, I read a little bit about the issue that I'm going to bring up, but I wanted to see if you could talk a little bit more about it. I was, I was just wondering about the generators. Again, they're tested several times a month. Is that correct? And then, and my question to that is, how much of noise pollution would there be with those?
I might actually phone a friend on this one. I have Scott Galati, my RCEC consultant. Scott, are you available to answer that one?
Yes, I am, Ms. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for the opportunity to speak in front of you. A couple of things. A typical testing schedule for these kinds of generators are to, are, we test them at no load, meaning they're tested at a very low load, usually 15 minutes a month for each generator. We also don't really test them at more than one at a time. So as Miles said in his presentation, these generators are inside an enclosure already. So all of the noise is already mitigated by the enclosure to make sure that we meet the standards as well as the additional screening that's provided. Towards the end of the year, sometimes you run the machine from, instead of 15 minutes, you run it for an hour to four hours. And again, we do those at one at a time. The last thing I'd like to say is, as far as the diesel is concerned when it comes to emissions, you know, again, we're talking about the possibility of maybe 10, 12 times a year for about 15 minutes each. And it's, our intention is to never have to run them. And so far, the data from PG&E shows that in the last 10 years, we would have never had to run them except for this testing protocol. So the commission looked at the testing protocol and looked at what the noise would be and looked at what the emissions would be and we're below every threshold, the thresholds that the Bay Area sets and the Bay Area Quality Management District, excuse me, sets. And we're also well below the city standards.
Thank you very much for that answer. I appreciate that. You committed to 100% renewable, but it wasn't clear, it said you could either go with PG&E or Ava. And Hayward has chosen Ava as our renewable energy source. What is preventing you from just committing to Ava?
We did have a great discussion with Ava about three, four months ago, just learning about the program. Very looking much forward to continuing the discussion with Ava.
But what is preventing you from just committing to Ava? Like what, what is holding you back? What are your thoughts about it? I was looking for a little bit more of a, an in-depth answer.
Just learning about Ava, very much so in the last couple of months and working with our energy procurement team and our potential clients to learn more about Ava. Ava sounds like a great community partner that I know has been partnered with Hayward, I believe, since 2001. And so a great community partner and one that I know a lot of the profits from Ava do stay within the community. So a great partner here in the community, something that we're just learning about and just beginning the discussions with Ava. So very much, again, looking forward to continuing discussions with Ava and learning, learning more from Ava.
I'll also jump in here quickly, Commissioner Lo, to add, as conditioned and as is reflected in the mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the project, the project is required to use an 100% renewable option. Ava is kind of the typical option that we see here in Hayward, but PG&E, if you buy power from them directly, they also have an 100% renewable option. So from a sustainability standpoint, from an environmental standpoint, the project will be using 100% energy from 100% renewable sources in either case, whether they go with Ava or with PG&E.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Blanton. And then lastly, I wanted to ask, I believe, and now I don't have it exactly in my notes where, but I believe initially, when the project was brought to one of the committees, and I don't remember if it was HASPA or who, but the discussion was around a $3 million public benefits package. And I'm wondering, why did you settle on $2 million instead of $3 million?
Yeah, we originally started at about $900,000, looking at the data center project across the street, across the highway at Exchange at 92. That project was about $730,000 equivalently. Through discussions with you all and through community discussions with stakeholders, we had, I've been able to identify areas of most impact and continuously improved that package. With our package coming out of the study session, I believe we're about $1.3 million and increased that up to $1.5. And then in discussions with other community stakeholders, as well as the request from HASPA to increase theirs specifically to $500,000, we were able to revisit our budget, really dig deep and bring that up to the $2 million figure. That's where we really started digging deep and cutting into bone a little bit. And really the public benefit packages, the one-time fees, really gave us an opportunity to help with some of these really key opportunities. And we ended up leveling out about $2 million.
Thank you. And I did also want to ask, do the, the jobs that you are generating specifically, like the, I think you said 41 jobs for 41 employees and then all of the other jobs that you listed, will there, is there a preference for Hayward residents for those jobs?
We don't set any restrictions on any of our employment. We welcome all and encourage everyone from Hayward to come down and apply. We don't set any preference. We wouldn't turn anyone away from a great job and excited to work with everyone. But of course, encourage especially people nearby, especially people in Hayward, to minimize commute times, to work in their own communities, to come, to come work at a great data center.
Thank you very much. And again, thank you to staff as well.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Miles. So one of my, my first, two questions for you. The first one has kind of been touched upon briefly regarding kind of the decision to opt into 100% renewable energies. Is it true that a lot of those will come from renewable credits?
That's correct. Yeah. We're very fortunate here in California to have a very clean electrical grid. However, some of that power is still imported. And so to reach a 100% renewable level, especially with 24/7 power, you know, the sun isn't always shining at nighttime, the wind isn't always blowing. We do use carbon credit offsets to achieve a 100% renewable level. These credits are typically used to help subsidize some of those new solar projects, some of those new wind projects and to help buy large acreages of trees to help deforestation, prevent deforestation and to also replant trees in areas that have been logged and to help subsidize that. And so a lot of these credits in our national programs and a lot of our clients' national programs help to focus a lot of those credits on a national level and focus those as local as possible.
Oh, okay. And one of the things I've heard over the past decade, pushback against the carbon credit program. If, is there a possibility that it may expire? And if so, what would be your recourse?
That's a great question. That's one that I'm not personally able to answer. I think Sharon, are you available to answer that? We have one of our sustainability consultants that was able to participate in the program.
Yes, hello. Thank you again for giving me the opportunity to present to the committee today. So for the carbon program, if it was canceled, then we'll focus more on the energy part of the... So usually, again, these things can, are not guaranteed, but with carbon credits and things like that, since the building also will look into embodied carbon and other stuff. So these are things that will be explored. So one of the things, majorly the things that we looked into was the energy aspect of the project and the water consumption of the project, things that will resume and continue to be a factor into continuing the project. While the carbon credit part is more concerned of, so carbon is, the embodied carbon can be operational carbon, which is also related to energy. So this also consolidates the idea that if we continue with the carbon, even if the carbon is canceled, then looking into the energy and operating energy of the building, that will help us also to consolidate and confirm that the energy and the energy efficiency of the building is going through with all the resonating of all the ideas that we can put into making sure that the building is energy efficient. And again, all of this also go with the, in management with the Cal Green requirements and all of the California Energy Commission requirements as well.
Okay, thank you. I don't anticipate it going away, except with the new administration and stuff. A lot of things are happening that we don't anticipate or haven't anticipated. And if, and if we had to, based on the footprint, I know we're limited on space, but would any, do you know of any size megawatt system or a proportion of that would fit on the footprint of the property? That maybe you could charge during non-rush hour, let's say at night, and then use harness in the day?
Yeah, right now, on the open space that we have, we are on the non-building space, we're really prohibited, given our open space requirements to provide green space. About 15% of our site plan is required and we're excited to comply with that. For open space requirements and green space, this provides break areas for our employees as well as areas for wildlife to come. We are solar ready on the roof. We are a little bit prohibited with the space that we have on our roof, given the equipment. However, as that space and that equipment continues to reduce in footprint, it's an opportunity for us to perhaps install scaled solar arrays. Right now, we're a little bit prevented on space. However, the building is solar ready.
Okay. Yeah. And hopefully the efficiencies will go up on those solar as well. Okay. And then my second question for you is, I see a few of the restaurant owners that are in the area. I asked about this in November briefly, but I was wondering if maybe you could talk a little bit more about the... a little bit more about the, the construction limitations that you're going to impose or not impose on the company, the local restaurants? It's a tough location to have any kind of food service. So, any impact, and I know over the last few weeks, PG&E was just redoing wires, and it really, really affected the business there.
Yeah.
And so, you already, you know, have a tough situation with the location, and now we're building this. Can you talk about how to mitigate those disruptions?
Absolutely. Yeah, we're blessed to have three street frontages on our project with Eden Landing, production and investment. And with our general contractor hit, we've really been able to focus that logistics plan to leverage investment in production, to stay away from Eden Landing. There's a bike lane there. We have our restaurants across the street. And so, for all of our site logistics, we're really focused on not using Eden Landing to limit that interaction between some of our larger vehicles, some of our semi-trucks, some of our other trucks, some of our dump trucks, from bicycles, from pedestrians, from other cars. And this will also help with reducing any street closures so that those retailers are not interrupted. In the event that there's any time that we do need to interrupt any type of traffic on Eden Landing, it'd be done with the help of traffic control measures such as flaggers to make sure that we keep the street open so that people are able to access all the commercial tenants across the street. And again, really focusing on leveraging production and investment.
Okay, yeah, that's appreciated. Because, I mean, just one day of everybody driving by saying, "Ah, it's too much trouble. I'll go somewhere else," that's really painful for the restaurant owners. So, if there's anything you can do to really minimize that, that's appreciated. Okay, that's all I had. I have one for staff, one question for staff. So, I was reading today, and I know we've all had our comments about the food court, food truck court. And is it my understanding that that will not be part of this situation now?
Correct. When we, when this idea originally came up at the CDC, we were envisioning where that might be in the nearby area. We talked about the Eden Landing Ecological Reserve parking lot, which is a couple of blocks away where all the shoreline trails are. We thought that might be a good spot for it. When talking, though, to East Bay Regional Park staff directly, they thought that that would be a more difficult thing to accommodate, especially because we're so close to the shoreline and there's sensitive species, sensitive habitat. So, having, you know, an event that comes in and trash and all of that sort of stuff, they were, they were concerned about that. So, in response to that feedback from them, that's when some of the contribution shifted towards other things in the area, bike and pedestrian improvements, additional trees, additional improvements to signage and things like that instead.
Okay, thank you. And then, I've worked a lot of job sites, and I never thought about it, but it must be just an organic thing where food trucks appear. Is there a process where food trucks show up? Do they have to get permits? Or is it just organically showing up?
Good question. For any food truck operators listening, we do have a process in Hayward. You have to get an annual permit to operate your food truck so we can make sure that you're operating in a legal way, you have all of your trash pickup and everything contained. And, but we do allow food trucks to operate in the industrial area, in parking lots and things like that. So, if there were food trucks that wanted to come and operate nearby, they would just have to fill out an application with the city and then renew that every year.
Is, thank you, Planner Blanton. Is there a way to kind of make our restaurant owners a priority over the food trucks? Because if, if we're flooded with a bunch of food trucks and all of a sudden our restaurant owners are struggling and we lose that business, I think that would be a total negative.
Yeah, honestly, like, our food truck permitting program has been in effect since I've worked for the city. So, I started working here in 2018, and it was revamped a little bit when we updated our industrial regulations in 2019. We do have some folks in different places around town that every year get their food truck permit. However, it has not been a pervasive program where we would be having significant competition for those brick and mortar businesses like we have in that Eden Landing Shopping Center. So, to date, it hasn't really been much of an issue, but I'll say, another long-range planning project I'm working on is a business-friendly update where we're looking at some of our commercial code updates. So, this could certainly be something that we revisit and discuss as part of that project moving forward.
Okay. And is there anything we should say to the restaurant owners if all of a sudden they're, we are inundated with trucks and it should affect them negatively? Is there a recourse or somebody they could talk to?
They can always come to planning. Again, the business-friendly, it's called Business Friendly Hayward is the name of the project. It's aimed at making sure that our regulations, our processes are permitting our fair-to-businesses, they are supporting businesses in Hayward. So, that's a project that's going on right now. Anyone that has concerns about this, any businesses, please reach out to me. I'm the head planner on that project, and we can certainly address your concerns as part of that effort.
Excellent. Thank you, Planner Blanton. And that's all. Thank you.
Commissioner Hammond?
Hello. First, I want to thank everyone for their hard work and putting together the staff report and its attachments, and the STACK team for bringing us this project. Your presentation was very informative and encouraging. I have a few questions. My fellow commissioners have already answered quite a few of them. What was the most significant concern in the mitigated negative declaration that you had to mitigate and that we should be aware of?
Scott, are you able to field that one?
Commissioner, nice to meet you. Thank you for letting me answer that question. Surprisingly, not much. We were not surprised. We proposed many of those mitigation measures. This applicant is the one that proposed to do 100% renewable and proposed to use renewable diesel and proposed to do the mitigation that you see there. So, there were certainly tweaks to the language that the, that the Energy Commission in consultation with the city worked on, and none of that was unacceptable to us. We didn't make a single comment. We accepted the ISM&amp;D because we weren't surprised. And I must tell you, I represent a lot of applicants. This applicant came to the table to work in such a way as to prepare in their application two years ago to the Energy Commission, hired all of the technical consultants to do the studies necessary to develop a full mitigation package with their application. I think that that should be acknowledged. That's why we weren't surprised, because most of the mitigation was the things we were committing to do because we're good neighbors.
I can also add to that, as the city is, we weren't the lead agency, but we're a responsible agency. So, within a mitigated negative declaration, basically, that means that you've reduced any identified potential impact to less than significant level. So, SEQA has specific thresholds that says, you know, for example, for greenhouse gases, you have to be under these very specific thresholds that the city has adopted and that BACMed has adopted. And then, the project has to identify ways to get below those thresholds. Some of the things were, as Scott was saying, from the design of the project itself, and other things are those items that are listed in the mitigation monitoring and reporting program to ensure that on every topic that SEQA covers, that the project will be below those thresholds. So, SEQA in and of itself doesn't weigh, it's a one topic more than others, they're all equally important. You have to get below levels of significance in all of them in order to use a mitigated negative declaration rather than an EIR. But for myself, when I've reviewed data center projects, the things that you tend to look at are air quality impacts, greenhouse gas impacts. Those are, those are the types of things that rise to the surface. But again, this project mitigated them below the identified threshold, so there are no significant impacts identified with the mitigation measures that are incorporated.
All right, thank you. The next question, in the conditions of approval, numbers 28, 29, 30, 31, and 32 cover everything from Native American artifacts to fossils. Has anything of this sort ever been found in the general vicinity? And what do you think the likelihood of us finding something there would be?
I think, Scott, if you could address that one as well.
I think when it comes to those things, we don't think it's a high likelihood, but because it could happen, we want to be prepared. And again, as Elizabeth said, to meet the thresholds, to ensure that there would be no significant impacts, we proposed the monitoring. We proposed those things. They did turn into mitigation measures so that they would be enforceable, but we proposed those in our application for the sole purpose of just making sure. So, I don't think it's going to happen, but we're prepared in case unlikely event it does. And that's what those mitigation measures, I think, prevent.
Correct. And I'll add here that this project did have an ISM&amp;D, so you saw those in the form of mitigation measures in the conditions of approval. But even for projects that don't require SEQA, the city has standard conditions of approval that get at that same thing. Basically, if you find anything that could be an artifact or something of cultural significance, there's a process that you need to follow to make sure that we're not destroying any of that. So, that's, that's something that you would see in any project in the city.
Sure. But historically, has there ever been anything found in that vicinity? I know that the coastline was populated by the Alonies and...
Yeah, the ISM&amp;D has some more detail about that in the Cultural Resources chapter. It talks about it. Not a ton in the exact immediate vicinity. There is stuff culturally that's been found in our area, and we do have tribes that have requested consultation as a result. No tribe requested consultation as part of this project. So, again, I agree with Scott, it's probably unlikely, but it's, it's not impossible that something would be found.
All right. Thank you very much. The last, at the last meeting, you stated that you'd be using local union labor and local suppliers to help construct the data center. It appears from the audience that that's still in the plan. Have you reached out to any other local unions besides the Carpenters Union, which wrote quite a few letters in the presentation this evening?
That's correct. We're excited to be proceeding forward with 100% union for our construction project, so across all the trades.
Okay, very good. What is your contingency in your, in your site plan for rising sea levels? I didn't see anything in the, in the report about sea level.
Right now, I believe our site plan is built up. I believe, maybe Bernie, if you can address this one, or I believe we have our civil engineer.
I think you said you had a lower level, if I saw.
I can, I can actually jump in here. So, HASPA has a shoreline mitigation plan that anticipates different levels of sea level rise, depending on the severity of what happens in the future. So, they have actual maps that identify which properties in our, largely for us in Hayward, it's in our industrial area that might be subject to inundation, depending on what the levels of sea level rise are. This property is just outside of that. So, the, the base elevations of the property are high enough that it's not anticipated, even if there was a sea level rise event, that it would be impacted at this property. Some of the properties to the west, closer to the shoreline, certainly would face impacts, but not this property, based on our latest data.
Okay, thank you. In the staff report, it was said that EV stations were mentioned for use by the public. How are the EV stations incorporated in this new plan? Or are they?
We have 18.
There are EV charging stations that are incorporated for the workers and for visitors to the site itself, but since it's a secured site, those would not be available to the public. It would just be available to visitors or employees of the site.
Okay, so there wouldn't be any room for any destination EV chargers?
No. One of the reasons that the public benefits package included all financial contributions was because this site was so constrained at 11 acres that there just was not space for any sort of public amenity to be built on-site while still accommodating all of the, the needs of the, the project itself.
Okay, thank you. And then, in the conditions approval, number 46, and in the public benefit package, just to be clear, are the funds for the La Vista Park and the in lieu fees for the tree mitigation separate?
A good question. So, yeah, this, this project will have park impact fee requirements, as all industrial projects in the city do. That's based on what the building permit issuance date is, and we have a fee that goes up with an annual inflator every year. So, that, the, the project is subject to that. In addition, because there were trees that were removed on-site that couldn't, the value of those trees could not be fully mitigated on-site, there is an obligation to pay the city into a tree fund for those additional trees that need to be planted elsewhere, likely La Vista Park. So, this contribution in the public benefits package is in addition to both of those things. So, it's an extra thing that they would not be required to do otherwise. The park impact fee, they're required to do. The in lieu fee for the tree medication, they're required to do. The public benefits package, that is something that they're proposing. It's above and beyond what is required of them.
Okay, very good. And so, can some of that money be used to plant trees in those neighborhoods where they're most needed for, to reduce carbon, like the Jackson Corridor, or in neighborhoods that are underplanted with trees in lieu of or in addition to La Vista Park?
Yeah, I think, and Miles can correct me if I'm wrong. The applicant team has been very clear with staff to say that they want to make these contributions as general as possible and really trust staff to know where best to spend these funds. That's why, for example, the HASPA contribution says HASPA, and then HASPA could elect to, you know, spend it on the shoreline, interpretive center upgrade, or on other, other projects that they are pursuing. So, similarly, with the, the tree donation to La Vista Park, they heard that from city staff. They heard that city staff thinks that's where it would most be needed, but that could certainly be direction that the planning commission gives staff, that they want that to be used more generally towards trees in different locations around the city.
Okay, thank you very much. And for my last question, besides your generous public benefits package, have you considered community involvement, such as volunteering for Adopt a Block program, or joining in on community cleanup events, or tabling a Hayward event to show the, show the public what the STACK Center is all about?
Absolutely, yeah. We are very involved in the communities that we are members of. As I was mentioning earlier, just a recent example in San Jose, but we have participated in cleanups in San Jose and look to participate in ongoing activities here in Hayward as well. One of the examples of the school district contribution was potentially to help out with a scholarship for the STEAM competition that's held each year, to help grow the minds of the future of tomorrow, our children. And so, just another example of one of the areas that we are really excited to help contribute in. And again, that's a starting place. We are continued members of our community, and that's one of the fun parts of our job. We get to engage with the community. We get to help out. And all of our employees, our future employees, are always excited to help out as well.
All right, that's very good to hear. Thank you very much. That's my questions.
Thank you. I have just a few questions. The first one is, what is the expected lifespan of the generators and how will they be disposed of or replaced at the end of their life cycle?
Scott, can you address that one?
Yeah, I'll do my best here. This is more of a commercial, more of an environmental guy, so, but I can tell you that most of the warranties that I've seen, they go for many years. I have worked on projects where I know that the generators are still operating and functioning appropriately 15 years into their life. You know, these generators are modules, so they're easy to pick up and send back to the manufacturer and get a new one. And so, I think the disposal would be to the manufacturer. What the manufacturer does at that point, I don't know. So, that's, I'm not really sure on being able to answer your full question. Sorry about that.
It's okay. Thank you. So, is there any scenario where a diesel spill from a generator could actually present a hazard to the public?
We do have, go ahead, Scott. Yep.
Sorry, I thought you were going to call on me and I was going to save you the, save you the time, but if you want to answer it.
No, go right ahead. We're probably going to say the same thing. Go right ahead, Scott.
Yeah, we have spill prevention and protection. We have a hazard materials plan that we prepare. You know, we, we only use licensed deliverers, and so, they're not, we're not filling this very often. As, as you know, we, we only test them about 15 minutes a month. So, we have thought about that, and we have the appropriate catch basins and the appropriate materials that have to be on-site during filling. And I think that's all required in one of the proposed conditions that we had proposed to the Energy Commission, showing that exactly how we prepare those plans and what we do. So, it is always possible to have a spill, but it's not going to be a spill that isn't, you know, more like ounces rather than gallons.
I can also add to this, just to clarify and process. So, in addition to this entitlement application that the applicant is required to get for this project, they're also required to apply for a separate fire permit, where they submit a fire protection engineer report and what's called an alternate means of protection related to exactly the diesel that's on-site. That's actually why... That, that's actually why this project is not just a major site plan review, but it's a major site plan review and an administrative use permit. It's because of the amount of diesel on site. So basically, it means that they have fire technical experts, engineers, submit all this documentation to show how things will be stored on site, how the diesel will be handled when being brought to the site, to make sure that there's adequate fire access. And then our team of technical experts reviews that, make sure that it meets fire code or meets the intent of fire code in the sense of an AMP. And our fire marshal signs off on that before anything is installed. So we're, through the conditions of approval of this project, we're kind of enforcing that that is double, triple check to make sure that it's safe and meets the intent of fire code. And if something were to happen, that our teams could safely access the site.
Thank you. So is a part of that fire protection report a community warning system at all? Is there any plan right now for, if there were? I, I hear that there's a lot being done to prevent it from happening. But if something were to happen, is there a plan for how, just, yeah, it would be communicated?
That wouldn't be in the technical fire report, but that would be something that we, as a city, our PIO, and in coordination with the fire chief would handle. As we've seen that first, there's been some, like refineries and different projects around the Bay Area that have had emergency events where that's coordinated, that communication about that is coordinated through the city's official channel. So it would be similar here in Hayward.
So then, just from my understanding, so it wouldn't be a part of this actual plan, but it's something separate that the city would, would.
Exactly, rather, and it's more of like, rather than having like a thousand different plans about how that would be communicated to the community in event of disaster, our fire chief would just be coordinating with our public information team to get that information out as quickly as possible. So it wouldn't be specific to this site. That's just what would happen in the event of any major emergency that the community need to be made aware of immediately.
Thank you. So I saw that the diesel fuel would be delivered as needed, and you already spoke to how infrequently you would even run the generators really, they're only there for an emergency. But is there an estimate of how often, like as needed, could be? Like with some of the other stack centers that you've developed? Like how often does diesel actually have to be brought in?
It's infrequent. Scott, if you could provide any specifics from our maintenance program that we have?
Sorry about that, yeah, I'm, I'm trying to look it up here. And I think that when we evaluated the number of trips, I think we thought we were going to have maybe two trucks a quarter at most.
So is that typically because you just need to replace the diesel? Or is it really being used in the testing and it's getting empty and it has to be refilled?
What we like to do is keep them, the tank all the way full, so we don't use a full tank. And then, so we top off the tank. In case there is emergency, we want to have 24 hours of, of runtime available to us. So we generally do a schedule. And if I, if I remember correctly, I think it's once a quarter, we top up the tank. So it's not filling it from the bottom of the tanks all the way. And when I say tank, each generator has its own tank that is enclosed, and it is double walled. And so, yeah, I think that's the, the best I can find right now. I'm happy to keep looking and, and see if I can find the exact number. But my, my memory fits good. I think it was a couple of trucks in a, in a quarter, once a quarter, we usually do that.
Great, thank you. That's, that's sufficient for what I wanted to know, so thank you.
Thank you, sorry.
So I had a question about the Gateway Marker project, so this might be more for staff. It says with community, can you speak to what that project is? And does it potentially include anything having to do with a Russell City Art Project?
That's a good question. I, I don't know if Jeremy LaCurco, our planning manager, knows more than I do, but my understanding is the Gateway Marker project has been something that's been on the city's roadmap for quite some time now. It's about incorporating signage or public art components specifically that welcome people into the city, for example, on Highway 92, coming into the city to, to kind of announce Hayward and all the great new things that we have here. There has been talks about including, like, artists from our community into helping develop some of the schemes of this. But I don't know the particulars of the project well enough to know if that also includes a connection to the Russell City Art Project. Jeremy, sorry to put you on the spot, but do you happen to know more about this than I do?
I actually don't know much more than you just mentioned, although I have, I do understand that one of the reasons why it hasn't happened sooner is because there hasn't been enough sufficient funding available to be able to provide that. But certainly, I mean, obviously, community input is gonna be hugely valuable as we're entering a gateway to the community. And so obviously, you would want to make sure that that does reflect Hayward in a positive way. But in terms of timeline or when that actually happens, I think, I, I'm not quite sure on that yet.
And I can add.
And again, oh, sorry, just to interject here. Again, if the commission wanted to make recommendations to, you know, shift some of the conditions of approval to maybe make sure that incorporates the Russell City Art Project, it would certainly be within your purview to do that.
And originally, this was a program commissioned by the CEDC. And so when we visited the CEDC almost a year ago now, this was one of the programs that we were very excited to present to the CEDC. Originally, it was commissioned for a budget of about $250,000. And just given that was back in 2017, when originally envisioned, we wanted to bring that forward to, you know, hopefully today's dollars, bringing that up to $300,000. And based on feedback from the CEDC, we thought this would be a great opportunity to involve the community or deploy the program that staff had already helped to develop. And so we wanted to, to again, leave that up to the discretion of decision makers like you that could best integrate that into the community.
Thank you. So my last question is, if this were approved tonight, when do you think you might break ground on this project?
That's a great question. We hope as soon as possible, but we likely anticipate around October or November. We would be submitting our building permits. We're submitting them as we speak. And so planning to commence as soon as possible. We are, you know, of course, facing economic pressures over the last year and a half, two years since we began this planning process. We've been facing inflation, which directly hits all of the equipment and construction that we're facing, as well as increased tariff risk for all of the steel and other equipment that we're purchasing. And so no time to waste, we're very excited to start construction.
Thank you. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, I just have a couple of quick ones, I hope. My first one was gonna be that same one. From start to finish, what do you expect the construction duration to be? And what is the overall build package price of this?
It's about 20 months, 24 months from start to finish, involving all of the site and horizontal work. The development costs have been evolving, and so I, I don't want to anchor to any figure or any number. But again, that, you know, day by day is continuing to grow, unfortunately. But so I don't want to presume to anchor on any number as that figure is continuing to evolve.
Okay, fair enough. And then my other one is, I, I think for staff, just for due diligence purposes, not that I don't believe the numbers, but do we, are we finding the same numbers? Approximately 8.8 million revenue that we'll receive?
Yeah, I can start to speak to this, and Jeremy can jump in if there's anything that I'm missing. We received that question from you. We spoke with Eric Pearson, who's on our sustainability team. He vetted that the utility tax numbers seem about right. If anything, they seem a little bit conservative because they assume a flat rate for the utility tax, when often that will increase slightly over time. And that's over half, I believe, if I'm remembering correctly, from the table, of the tax benefit to the city. For the other numbers, we weren't able to verify with our finance team specifically to do the same sorts of calculations. But generally speaking, the information that's conveyed in those reports is accurate.
Super, okay. And my last thing is, senior planner, Blanton is on vacation. I want to nominate her for a huge raise this year, that's all.
Thank, second and.
There any other commissioner questions? Not seeing any, I will close this section of our agenda, thank you. And we will now move on to public comments. So I know I have, I believe, 11 speaker cards for this item. Are there any public comments on Zoom?
Yes, we have Reeve Jada.
Just one, okay. Let's do the, the online comment first. Each person will have three minutes for comments. So I miss out, if you could please set a timer for our public speakers.
Hello?
Hello, you can go ahead.
Hi, so I'm one of the owners in that plaza that the gentleman announced earlier. And our concern is, is that we have been suffering for the past year, year and a half. What is the city of Hayward, besides the 50,000 that you guys are gonna honor for everyone at the plaza? But what else are you guys willing to do to help us as business owners? Because the landlord for that plaza, he's not willing to help us with anything. In fact, he actually raised the rent on us rather than lowering it, knowing that we've been suffering. So, and the city of Hayward, I have to mention, has been such a big help. We just opened a place in San Francisco. I have never met a city that is actually on top of it. I want to thank Paul and Miles for always being so consistent with us. But now our concern is, is that we're barely making it. I'm hearing that if there's gonna be a food truck, you guys are gonna be okay with it. You know, we want to get as much benefit out of the construction you guys are doing. And I'm speaking upon all the owners in that plaza.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to our in-person comments. So again, if anyone would like to comment on this item who didn't already, please submit a speaker card. But I'll begin by calling from this group, so Luis Andrade.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Luis Andrade. I'm president of the Hayward Recreation and Park District. But tonight, I come to you as trustee for the HASPA. And we are satisfied with the, the increased, how do you want to call it? The increased amount that, that they're offering as mitigation. I do want to say that the purpose of the HASPA is to mitigate climate change. And even though this project is slightly out of their boundaries, it will benefit eventually, or all the projects in, in the area will benefit from our, our mitigation efforts. So I think it's an appropriate nexus between this project and what's happening, what HASPA is doing. We plan to improve the shoreline center. It'll be not just for open space and natural, considering natural values there, but also for, we're going to repurpose it or refocus it on, on sea level rise, which is, will affect the area. It definitely will affect the area. So it'll, and we should know that, that, that center, you know, hosts several thousand schoolchildren every year and, and field trips. And will probably get, including from this local area, but also the entire Bay Area. And I believe that we'll be able to accommodate more and have a, a program that will be of great interest to not only schoolchildren, but the general public. So just want to say we approve the, the mitigation that's been offered. And that's, that's all I'm gonna say right now, so thank you.
Thank you, Louis. So I apologize for mispronouncing your name and anyone else whose name I mispronounce. Next is Olegario Guzman.
Good evening, members of this committee. My name is Olegario Guzman, and I'm a member of Line New Labor's Local 304, right here in Hayward. And I've been a member for two years. I'm here to express support for this project. A project like this offers this community the chance to start and/or further a union construction career in their local area, much like I have and like my brothers and sisters behind me have. And since I joined this union, my life has improved dramatically because I'm certified, trained, and working. I once felt like I had no options for employment, but the labors and Local 304 were there when I needed a career to start providing for my family. There are hundreds, if not thousands, more in my position. As a resident of this area, this project allows me to work within the community where I live, where my family attends school and attends church, and where we spend our money, all while I contribute towards my pension and provide healthcare benefits for my immediate family. Projects like these show that the labors in our community are proven and trusted partners. It's a project built by this community for the same community, the exact partnership we need to move Hayward and its residents forward. I urge you all to approve this project, grant the permits, and break ground so that this community, our members, and your constituents can begin working. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Alejandro Martinez.
Good afternoon, chair and commissioners. My name is Alejandro Martinez, and I've been a member of the laborers' union for the past 10 years. I'm here tonight on behalf of the 4,363 members in Alameda County and the 1,058 members that live here in Hayward. I'm here tonight to voice my strong support for the proposed stack data center and ask you to grant the permits to get construction started as soon as possible. This project will bring more jobs and better opportunities to our community. It will provide great jobs and opportunities, especially for young adults and anyone looking for a fresh start. It also allows skilled training through our apprenticeship program. When I was younger, I had big dreams of going to college, starting a career, and have a family. Unfortunately, it didn't go as planned. I found myself struggling, making ends meet while trying to raise a family, especially here where the cost of living is so high. One of the largest costs next to housing is the expense of owning a, a vehicle associated with the fuel and commuting. After years of hardship, the laborers' union gave me an opportunity for a second chance, and I was able to start a career as a skilled laborer. This general contractor has been a proven partner in the past and believes in equitable benefits to all workers in their, on their projects. This long-term project, so close to home, will create opportunities for others like me, who are looking for a way to build a better future for themselves and their families, providing livable wages, health benefits, an entire family, and a pension so they can retire with dignity. We will also appreciate the opportunity to work here, close to home, and maybe I can catch a soccer game for my daughter. It will be my honor and privilege to work with my brothers and sisters in this project. I urge you to please support and grant the permits so we can get to work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Jason Gumatao.
All right, greetings, chair and commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Jason Gumatao. I'm a, a member and organizer with IBW Local 595. I'm also a delegate with the Alameda County Building and Construction Trades Council, speaking on behalf of our local, as well as the BTC and a number of the other affiliated locals in the room. We are, we are here to urge you to approve the staff recommendation of the proposed major site plan review. You know, the, some of the things that were talked about tonight, I was gonna try and address, but it sounded like there was one thing that was really important to the committee, the public, the, the benefits, the community benefits portion. And so while the, the developer and the team maybe didn't hit the 3 million as, as it probably could have been viewed, what I would offer is that a, a project like this, maybe there's 400 construction workers. You know, the state requires about 20% be performed by apprentices. That's about 40 apprentices on this job over the duration of the 20 months. If, if those 40 apprentices works for approximately six months, about 1,000 hours, they're hovering around $30 an hour when you look at entry-level apprentices. That's over, that's north of $1 million. That's $1 million for apprentices that are from Hayward that can spend it at these restaurants, they can spend it at Buffalo Bills, they can go down to Costco, they go down to Target, or whoever, you know, they're, however they're spending their money. And so while it wasn't sort of explicitly listed, if you would, if you would consider that part, that part of it as it relates to the workforce in Hayward that, that will be working on this project, maybe Miles wasn't able to sort of communicate it. maybe Miles wasn't able to sort of communicate it like as we know it, but our contractor partners and our locals will be prioritizing Hayward residents on this project, okay? So anyhow, we urge you to approve the staff recommendation. Appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Victor De La Torre.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Victor De La Torre, and thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening. I am a third-generation Launa, that is the Labor's International Juniors North America, and I've been a resident of this area for over 20 years. Thanks to the construction trades and the opportunity that they have to offer, I was able to start a career off as apprentice when I was 18 years old, learning the skill sets that will help me build a career. This is why I'm here this evening in support of the STACK Data Center, projects that will bring much-needed, good-paying jobs that benefits our brothers and sisters, where careers, opportunities will be offered to the youth and those facing hardships in these difficult times we are facing due to inflation. I am a single father of four, and I can't stress enough the importance of being able to work close to home instead of driving multiple hours commuting. Projects like this will bring, will allow us to balance home and work. I am extremely grateful to be able to provide a roof over my family's head and fortunately to be able to send my kids off to college and watch them grow up in the community that I grew up in. I would not have been able to do this if it wasn't for the construction opportunities provided to me through projects like this one. No, I know many believe that these construction jobs are only temporary, but I'm here to tell you, these jobs are not temporary. Construction jobs build America and maintain the communities that we live in. It's not just a job, it's a career. I am in full support of this project. You have a decision to make, and I trust that you will make the right one and get us working. Once again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Oscar Mazariegos.
Good evening, esteemed members of the Planning Commission. My name is Oscar Mazariegos. I am here before you not only as a field representative for the Carpenters Union, representing the 1,000-plus members that reside in the city of Hayward, but also as a Hayward resident myself for the last 15-plus years. The developer, STACK Infrastructure, has chosen a responsible contractor in hit contracting, which is signatory to the Carpenters Union. Currently, construction in general has been very slow. So residents and all members from the surrounding areas could benefit from work opportunities that a project of this size can offer, not only during construction, but opportunities after as well. Also, by hit contracting being signatory to the carpenters, they are part of a state-approved apprenticeship program that will bring many new, new next-generation carpenters to start a new career and many to finish their apprenticeship by becoming gentlemen with a career that they can be proud of. In conclusion, I want to thank you for the time to talk tonight. And also, myself and the rest of our carpenters over here, we urge you to please support this project and continue investing in our workforce, our future, and local economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Schwinn.
Good evening, Commissioners and Chair. My name is Michelle. I'm here today as a third-year apprentice in the local carpenters union here at 713, as well as being a Hayward resident. I'm here today in support of the STACK Data Center project. My union has done a lot more than simply provide a job. It's built a foundation for a stable and dignified life, not only for me and my family, but for hundreds of apprentices across Alameda County and Northern California. As a union apprentice, I've had the privilege of working alongside highly-skilled professionals, learning trade-specific skills, and contributing to the growth of my community and those around me. The benefits of large-scale projects like this go beyond just the workers that are directly involved. They extend to the local businesses, families, and the entire region. So once again, I ask you to please support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Rosalie Ojeda.
Hello, good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Rosalie Ojeda. I have been a carpenter at NorCal Carpenter's Local 713 in Alameda County for 20 years and a Hayward resident for 40-plus years. I am here today to ask for the approve of the STACK Center general project. I'm very excited about it. I already asked my nephew to join the union, he's a welder. The HITT contracting has made a commitment to pay area standard wages, benefits, and retirement to all construction workers working on their job site. This job will also create opportunities for many residents from Hayward and surrounding areas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Gerardo Rios.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Gerardo Rios. I'm a member of Drywall Local 9068 for the last 10 years. I'm also a Hayward resident for the last year. I'm here today to ask for the opportunity for STACK's Data Center project. This project will create a lot of necessary jobs for the residents of Hayward and surrounding area, help a lot, and keep a lot of people working during these critical times where jobs are scarce. These workers can also benefit not only from liable wages, but benefits for ourselves and our families. So once again, I ask you to please approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. David Calderon.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is David Calderon. I'm a field representative for Bricklayers and Allied Craftworkers, Local 3 of Northern California. I was born and raised in Hayward. Hayward is close to my heart. I urge the Commission to go forward with this project. I look forward to having the opportunity to give a local resident an opportunity to have an apprenticeship program and a middle-class career. Thank you.
Thank you. Julian Dodge.
Good evening, Commissioner, Commission meeting. I am Julian Dodge, project manager with Redwood Electric Group, signatory with IBW Local 595. Been planning on working on this project for a while now, and I'm very excited to get some guys hired and get out there and get after it. So I just urge you guys to please support this project and approve it tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Robert Downs.
Thanks, Commissioners, and good evening. My name is Robert Downs. I'm a business agent with Local 342, the plumbers and pipe fitters. I just want to say you guys had some amazing questions tonight with the project. Just to address a couple of them with some of the issues about fuel spills. 25 years in the heavy industrial industry, myself, working in refineries, all fuel containment systems are double-contained. So if there is a spill with inside a generating system in the fuel management, it leaks into the first containment system, that is the outer containment. There's moisture sensors that would trigger onsite alarm that basically the onsite, you know, maintenance guys that are working the buildings, it triggers them to obviously respond in those scenarios. So I just wanted to kind of point that out. That is something that's a valuable system, that's, you know, obviously moving fuel oil around a facility like that. So hopefully that kind of answers that question with the fire code prevention too with that stuff. Looking at their generator runtimes that they were proposing are only 15 minutes a month. Was that correct? Okay, so if you look at that, that's only three hours a year. The average commercial generator runs about 40,000 on its lifetime span. So if you do the math there, I mean, that three hours a year, that thing will last a long time. So you're probably looking at probably maintenance-ing it from not using it enough, more so than having to replace it, I would think, in that scenario. And then to all the business owners around, I promise you guys, we are tired of eating on the same food trucks all the time. Every job site we go to, the food truck is always the same. It doesn't matter who owns the food truck. I promise you, we will be eating at your businesses during this project. Just, you know, it's refreshing to see that there's businesses right across the street from the project, not including all of the business that you're gonna see in the future from the data center itself. So the UA, we cover spring fitters, plumbers, pipe fitters, welders. So we will bring a lot of business to this with the job site itself, and we urge you to move forward with the project also, along with my constituents and the unions. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was our last public comment. So I will close public comments, and we will move on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Lo.
Thank you, Chair. So I definitely hope that the applicant will consider using Ava. And I hope that you will continue with the talks with them and getting to know them so that you will be comfortable doing that. But I am grateful that you are committing to 100% renewable. I still hold out hope and would love to see the $3 million. However, I definitely feel better about it after hearing from Mr. Gumatauto. So I feel a lot better about that. And also, I just want to say it's very, very refreshing to see so many people here passionate about a topic. Usually, we don't have anyone here, and it's great to see you not only here, but the fact that you were brave enough to come up and speak. You didn't just say words that were persuasive, which you did, but you also educated us in ways that all these experts hadn't educated us. So I just really appreciate it and encourage you to do that for topics like this that you are very concerned about. And I would encourage other groups to do the same. What I like most about these two, about this project, is that our residents will have jobs, that it's jobs, it's revenue generating. And also, my favorite thing besides the jobs, which is huge, is the design. I really like the design. I like the fact that the applicant takes pride in the architecture and didn't just give us a square box or a rectangle that is, especially with it being something that people will see when they come off of the bridge. I really like that design, that water sort of design that they have on the, I think that's the third, three-story building. So thank you for that. When this project, when we had a work session back in November, I supported the project. I just wanted to get more money for Hayward, and I think Hayward deserves the best. I think Hayward deserves to have all the public benefits that we could possibly get. And so that's why I've been pushing for that. But I was in support of the project in November. I'm supportive of the project today, and you guys being here just has made me even more excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lo. Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you. So first off, thank you, STACKs, for being here. Again, this is an awesome project. I'm so glad you chose Hayward to make this your home. And I feel a little bad that all you folks have to be here to advocate for this project. I agree, it's nice to have people here, but this shouldn't be why you should be here advocating. This should be a no-brainer. This should be stamped approved, right? There should be, there shouldn't be even an issue with this. I don't think the policymakers understand that there is like an AI race right now, and it's really about the economic interest of the country and us as individuals. And hyperscale data centers like this make this like realistically possible. A hyperscale data center needs two things: cheap power, really cheap power, and space. I don't know why they chose Hayward. I can think of a lot of other places in the United States that make a heck of a lot better space, but thank you for being here. I feel frustrated that there is any payment made for a special benefit. I think that sets a really bad precedent. I mean, we want the best, the highest-quality data center equipment located in the San Francisco Bay Area that provides us the interest to support our future. And $2 million is too much to spend, given all the other benefits that are coming here. And I think there needs to be a realistic discussion at the state level about how much power is actually consumed by a 50-megawatt data center. It's laughable to think that this is gonna be supported by any type of renewable energy. I mean, that's not realistic unless, you know, the state and the country get on the ball and come up with a plan here really quickly, because there's a lot of other places in the world that are surpassing this country. So thank you for being here. I fully support this, and I'd like to make a motion to approve this item.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Do we have other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Gobadi.
Thank you, Chair. I also want to thank the STACK Center for coming out and working with our staff on this very innovative project. I think it's gonna be a wonderful gateway, you know, as you come off the 92 to welcome people into Hayward residents and visitors alike. To the development services, I also want to thank you for the robust work session and everything that has gone into planning this, to our citizens and our workers. You have shared a journey about, that's common here in Hayward and common in California. And what struck me is that while I am appreciative of the increase in the community benefit program, it struck me that, you know, there is perhaps a missed opportunity in that I felt the, it wasn't an open process. It wasn't necessarily, there was definitely some partners that were missing here. I didn't see St. Rose, I didn't see Cal State Hayward, I didn't see Chabot, Fesco, some of the organizations in our very city that provide lifelines to our community. And I, through your conversations and through your public comments this evening, workforce development is very much a part of our fabric here in Hayward. And I think the missed opportunity is a way that we could work that the city of Hayward and perhaps St. Rose or Cal State Hayward or some of our education institutions to work with some of the future clients in the STACK Center on AI technology, on getting our, you know, working with teachers and educators on AI curriculum or at St. Rose with our medical professionals on how to use AI in medicine. And so I am supportive of this project, but I would like to see our policymakers take another look and maybe perhaps invite some of our other stakeholders here in Hayward to build something that's sustainable and can grow year after year after year instead of just a one-time funding opportunity. I know that we have leverage, we can leverage funds from other sources, and that's what I would like to see with this community benefit program. I would like to see it grow, I would like to see it expand and include more people to really grow our economy, not just for one budget cycle or two budget cycles, but for many budget cycles.
Thank you. Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, a few comments. First off, to all the brothers out there, one of my biggest fears is public speaking. They couldn't probably have paid me to come up and do what you guys did, and I really appreciate it. I know it's not comfortable for a lot of you, and you guys really rocked it. So thank you for coming out and doing that. Apologize for the long meeting, it doesn't happen all the time, but it's very nice of you guys to come out. I'm a card-carrying IBW. Most of my friends are 595, and I even worked for Redwood City Electric before it was Redwood Group. So very cool. Also, primarily wanted to thank Miles and Dave and the whole STACK Center team for your collaboration with staff and with us and the neighbors. team for your collaboration with staff and with us and the neighbors, the restaurants and the unions. I just think it's a phenomenal precedent to set for maybe future builds. So thank you for that. That's really excellent. And staff, obviously, amazing, amazing work. I'm really excited about this project for the work it's bringing and also for what you guys will provide. I appreciate the benefits package and the increased package that recently came out. It means a lot. And, and also putting the EV chargers. I think that's really, really appreciated from my standpoint. I will definitely be supporting this, and I still believe that Senior Blanton should get a raise. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hammond?
Yes. I like this project, and I'm excited to see all the benefits it'll bring to this community. The benefits package is generous and will go a long way to help different aspects of the city. The, the project will replace a property in the industrial park that's struggling with lease vacancies, where the project will be a future benefit to the city of Hayward in technology, revenue, and community commitment. In general, I'm pleased with the design, and I appreciate the different architectural elements incorporated in the design, seen from every side. Maybe I'm not 100% on board with the screening, and I'd like to see potential mural opportunities for local artists in combination with the proposed screen wall as a condition of approval. Being this, this will be the tallest building in the industrial park, and that'll be viewed from a distance from all directions. I hope that every effort has been made in developing the final design that would create a building that the city of Hayward can be proud of. It will serve as an example for future similar developments. I'm very excited about this project. Thank you.
Thank you. So I just also wanted to echo Commissioner Lo's comment, thanking everyone who made a public comment. Just the amount of information that we all got from you, that was not the same information that we had already received, it's just very appreciated. Thank you all for being here. It is so exciting to, to see people involved and engaged. So yes, hope that we do see more of that. And then, I wanted to thank the applicant. I really do think that the amount of engagement that I feel like we had with you and just seeing the responsiveness that you had to the community and even the way that you answered our questions, I just really appreciate that. I do appreciate what I thought was a significant increase in the public benefits package, even though I may have been one of the people who suggested an even higher amount previously, but that's negotiation, right? So I appreciate where you ended up with it and all the, the things that you added. I appreciate your investment in union labor, and then hearing that it's going to be 100% union labor is really exciting. I appreciate that you like named that the design will be on all sides of the building, not just the front-facing portion. That's really great, too. And then finally, appreciation to staff and Senior Planner, Senior Planner Blanton, especially for being here. And so I do want to see if there could be maybe a friendly amendment to the motion. I do really want to make sure that the Russell City Art Project is a part of that Gateway Marker project. And so just adding in some language around that as a condition, is that something that we could potentially do? And so I'm asking you, Commissioner Stevens, if that's something that you would be amenable to.
I am, with the caveat that I don't accept and appreciate the use of funds. So just as long as clear that on the record, I do not believe that STACK should have to pay any special benefit, but I recognize your comment.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Do we, can we have a second on the amended?
Yes.
Second.
And then just to check, Commissioner Hammond, you actually mentioned something about a mural. Were you suggesting that as a friendly amendment as well, or are you just saying that's something that you, you just want on the record?
Yeah, I'd like to see that as a friendly amendment.
So then that would be directed to Commissioner Stevens as well?
So, well, I appreciate the intent of that. I, I do not agree with that, because as I previously said in November, that a data center is part of the base infrastructure of our society, and the electrical generation is a key component of that. I don't think it should be screened. I, I, I understand the benefit of, and the aesthetic quality of what you've created, but I fundamentally disagree that it should be screened. So I don't know how you handle that. I appreciate what your comment is, but I, for this purpose and what we're trying to achieve and the fundamental basis that our society and the economic success of all of us thrive on the future of AI, I just, I think we have to get real about things and we can't cover things up.
Thank you. So I think how we proceed from that is that we do have a motion on the floor with a second, and so it stands as you have stated it, and we can vote. And if the vote doesn't pass, then you could propose a new motion that includes your, your piece. So with that, Ms. Allen, could we have a vote on the motion?
Commissioner Franco Clausen, absent. Commissioner Goodbody?
Excuse me. Can you repeat the motion, or can we have more discussion? What is, what is the motion?
So.
What is the motion and the amendment?
So, Commissioner Stevens, originally just motion for approval. The amendment that I gave was that I would like to see Russell City Art Project included in the Gateway Marker funding specifically. It's because it's something that I actually talked about in the last meeting. And so staff was unclear whether that is a part of it or not, and so I would definitely like to see it there. So that is the motion on the floor. Are we okay to vote? Or do, okay, sorry. So Commissioner Allen, I mean, sorry.
Ms. Allen?
Could you please call roll?
Commissioner Franco Clausen, absent. Commissioner Goodbody?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Lo?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes, and one quick thing, when I said brothers, I meant brothers and sisters, because I remember there was a couple out there, so thank you.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Chair Hardy?
Yes. The motion passes. Thank you all. All right.
We would like to take like a one-minute break, if that's okay, before we move on. Two minutes.
Okay.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
Okay, thank you. We're returning from our break, and we are moving on to agenda item number two. For this item, the Planning Commission may make a recommendation to City Council. Item number two is PH25020. It's a public hearing for a proposed zoning text amendment, conditional use permit, and site plan review to allow drive-throughs in the air terminal commercial district and construction of a Starbucks coffee shop with drive-through as part of a new two-story mixed-use development on a vacant portion of the property located at 22101 Hasperian Boulevard, adjacent to the Home2 Suites by Hilton Hotel, and the finding that the proposed zoning text amendment and mixed-use development are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA. Does staff have a presentation for this item?
I do, yes. Thank you, Chair Hardy. Steve Kowalski, Senior Planner. And this is an application for a small number of amendments to the zoning ordinance, along with an accompanying conditional use permit, which I'm going to say, I'm going to refer to as a CUP from here on out, and site plan review application for a new mixed-use development featuring a Starbucks drive-through coffee shop on a vacant portion of the property at 22101 Hasperian Boulevard. All zoning ordinance text amendments require review by the Planning Commission and final approval or denial by the City Council. The CUP and site plan review hinge upon the approval of the zoning text amendments. So if the amendments are not ultimately approved by the council, then the Starbucks drive-through would not be allowed to be built. In January 2019, the applicants, who are here in the audience tonight, obtained site plan review approval to construct the Home2 Suites by Hilton Hotel on the subject property, along with a small multi-tenant commercial building where the mixed-use development is now being proposed. In early 2022, while getting ready to build the hotel project, the applicant informed staff that the multi-tenant building was no longer economically viable at the site, and asked if it could be replaced with a new Starbucks drive-through. Staff presented this idea to the Council Economic Development Committee in April 2022, at which time the committee expressed support for the idea, but with the caveat that it be part of a mixed-use development to make better, more efficient use of the site. So in March of 2024, the applicant submitted the application to amend the zoning ordinance and obtain approval of a CUP and site plan review for a mixed-use project with the Starbucks on the ground floor and four small office suites on the second floor. This is an aerial photo of the site. As you can see, the, the subject property is the part that's kind of highlighted in a yellow color, outlined in red. As you can see, when the applicant completed the construction of the hotel, he constructed all the necessary parking, landscaping, and utility connection improvements for the site in anticipation of its eventual development. And this was all just done a couple of years, a couple of years ago. The site is 1.76 acres in size and has vehicular access via existing driveways along Hasperian Boulevard and SkyWest Drive. It shares parking with both the hotel to the south, and this large rectangular white building is the hotel that we're talking about, and the adjacent business park to the north via reciprocal access and parking easements. And this kind of saw-toothed building to the north is the office, business park that we're talking about. The site is zoned air terminal commercial, or ATC for short, and is designated retail and office commercial in the general plan. The proposed mixed-use project features a 2,345-square-foot Starbucks on the ground floor and a 1,912-square-foot second floor that would contain four small leased office suites, ranging in size from a little less than 400 square feet to a little more than 400 square feet. 16 new additional parking spaces would be built directly outside of this building. But as I said before, the site also has access to the other existing parking spaces around the hotel and the adjacent hotel and business park. Two outdoor patios will also be provided and furnished with Starbucks standard cafe tables, chairs, and sunshades for use by the cafe's customers and the building's office tenants. This slide shows the proposed site plan layout. Hasperian Boulevard is the street at the top of the graphic, while SkyWest is the street at the bottom. The entrance to the drive-through, the drive-through lane, rather, is directly inside of the SkyWest driveway. You can see it here. driveway. You can see it here. And this is to make sure that in a worst-case scenario, if there were overflow queuing of vehicles, those vehicles would not spill out into the much, obviously much busier Hasperian Boulevard right-of-way and pose a traffic safety hazard. This slide lists the small number of amendments to the zoning ordinance that need be made to enable the proposed mixed-use project with the Starbucks drive-through to move forward. There's five sections of the code that need to be amended. The first one is just kind of a cleanup item here. I don't need to go into that. But the second one is, is one of the key ones. It's an amendment to the list of permitted uses in the ATC zoning district to amend that, the list to allow drive-through restaurants and coffee shops like Starbucks and Peet's with a drive-through, subject to approval of a conditional use permit, which would be an approval that would require a planning commission review. And then the other three are amendments to the, the general regulations governing all drive-through restaurants throughout the city. And I don't need to go in, in, these are all described in detail in your staff reports. Staff reviewed the proposal for conformance to the general plan and for compliance with the applicable standards for a new mixed-use project with a drive-through and found that it complies with the standards of the zoning ordinance and is consistent with a number of goals and policies of the land use and economic development elements of the general plan. Again, I won't read each of these verbatim here on the slide, but here are four goals and policies which the proposal does conform to. So finally, if the planning commission agrees with staff and supports the project, then staff recommends it forward the proposed text amendments and accompanying CUP and site plan review to the City Council with a recommendation for approval based on the findings in Attachment 2 to your staff reports and subject to the conditions in Attachment 3. If the commission does not wish to support this project, which is your, which is an option available to you, then it can forward the matter to the council with a recommendation for denial instead and direct staff to prepare recommended findings for that denial. And that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Senior Planner Kowalski. So at this time, we will, well, actually, is there a, a presentation from the developer, the applicant, for this project?
I, I believe the developer is just here, is here to answer any questions that the commission may have. I don't think he has a presentation prepared.
Okay. Thank you for being here. Okay, so at this time, we'll open it up for our commissioner questions. Do any commissioners have questions? Commissioner Hammond?
Yes. Can this building be used for another type of business that needs a drive-through in the future? And will they also need to apply for a conditional use permit?
That's an easy one. Once the conditional use permit is approved for a drive-through, whether it's a Starbucks, or a McDonald's, or a Taco Bell, it would, if the Starbucks were to close down after, you know, a year later after it's constructed and a McDonald's asked to move in, they would be able to move in. There is a sunset period of six months for another drive-through operator to move into the space. If more than six months elapsed, then that McDonald's or that Taco Bell would have to reapply for a new conditional use permit.
Well, yeah, thank you. And on the zoning map, Attachment 5, how many of the nine ATC parcels are considering a drive-through at this time?
None. And some of them, of those parcels, there's probably two that are, would be capable of accommodating a new, a new drive-through that's built from the ground up. But they're all, they're all occupied by existing buildings. So something would have to be demolished. Some parking spaces would have to be removed and replaced. So there's not, none of those lots are vacant and, and ready for, for a corporation like McDonald's or a Taco Bell to move, to move on to them.
Okay. And then would each one of those parcels be required to obtain its own conditional use permit for a drive-through? Or would this be, if approval tonight, would this be a blanket approval for all future ATC parcels?
No, this, this approval is changing the rules for those parcels. It's only approving, it would only approve a drive-through at this property next to the Home to Suites Hotel. If any other corporations wanted to try to build a drive-through on those other parcels that are zoned ATC, they would have to come back. We would have to take them back before you for their own conditional use permits.
Okay. And of the 10% plus tax that the city charges, what is the tax revenue percentage going directly to the city of Hayward?
Economic Development Director Paul Nguyen is probably best suited.
I think I'm kind of quoting you from the previous.
Hi. Good evening, Commissioners. Paul Nguyen, Chief Economic Development Officer. So I understand the question is, of the sales tax that a consumer pays at a business in Hayward or, or this use, what percent of that goes to the Hayward General Fund?
Yes.
So about 1% of the sales tax that you pay as a consumer when purchasing a good or having a transaction in Hayward goes to the general fund.
So who's the, who's the big beneficiary of?
Well, it's a, it's a pretty complicated formula, but the majority of it is state sales tax. So the states get their cut, and then there's a proportion of formula where that dollar, where that 10%, or, you know, 10.75% tax gets divvied up from the state to the counties and then to the cities.
Okay. Thank you.
Cheers.
Thank you, Paul. And then what is the maximum occupancy for the office spaces on the second floor? And will this impact parking or pedestrian traffic for employees or visitors visiting the office spaces?
I don't know the answer to the question, what is the maximum occupancy of an office space? But, but we did do a parking analysis to make sure that there is sufficient parking for typically, the parking requirement for an office is one for every 200 square feet. And so each of those offices is about 400 square feet. So if you do the math, they need a little less than 10 parking spaces for the office. But there's a sea of parking around the hotel and the business park that is largely available nearly all the time. So, and the, and this property would have the rights to use that parking.
Okay. Are any of these office spaces exclusive to Starbucks activities? Are there going to be Starbucks offices? Or are these going to be leased to?
No, I, perhaps the developer is, is better equipped to answer that question, but I don't believe so. These are just going to be leasable, small spaces, probably flex spaces. I'm not sure. Jay, do you want to, do you want to address the commissioner's question about the office spaces? Jay, push the green button. Yes, please. Thank you.
Good afternoon, all the members of the Planning Commission. My name is Jay Van Shah, and we are the part of the developer ownership of this site development with the Hilton Hotel. And as you, as you know, that this is a complimentary to my hotel also. We can have the more guest service. We can bring more people from the San Mateo side or these by adding the coffee in our parcel. And regarding the parking, I, I think that is the question, right?
Well, I guess the question is, the, the office spaces up above, are these going to be used for, for Starbucks?
Oh, no. Obviously, for the other tenant, we have already, we are negotiating the lease with them. But once it is approved, we will sign the lease on that. So it is not for Starbucks.
Okay. So can another question, there's another question on the condition of approval, number 11, for a separate building permit should be required for all signage. Will these, these spaces, will they get their own signage? I didn't see anything on the, on the drawings that would advertise their business or?
No. We will not allow them to put the signage on our, on this parcel.
So they wouldn't be able to advertise their business?
No.
Okay. And then the, the condition of approval, number 28, trash enclosures. They're required to be self-contained with a sanitary sewer connection. But the approved cleanup method includes a dry cleanup method with no hose bib. I'm guessing that's so you can't wash the, the trash?
Yeah, that's correct. That's, that's more of a question for us over here in staff. And that is correct. That's a clean water regulation nowadays. Back in the old days, people would just wash, and then the leachate from the dumpsters would, would seep down into the, and then it ends up in, you know, ultimately in a.
I think we all kind of know trash enclosures get kind of gritty and grimy. How is, I'm just curious how you're going to clean that without giving it some little extra washing?
I don't, I actually know the question. That came, that condition is a standard condition from our Environmental Services Division. But it's, everybody has to do it nowadays, not just here in Hayward, but all throughout the Bay Area, probably throughout the state of California.
Okay. Just say that we can reach out to an inspector for inquiries. Just curious how that, how you might be able to clean that. And then it said in the condition of approval, number 36, all businesses are required to arrange for separate collection of recyclables and organics. Does this mean that each business will need to secure their own trash service? Or does this mean that each business must comply with the three-way separation?
The latter. So each little office will have to have its own garbage can, recycling bin, and green waste bin. And then, of course, Starbucks, which generates a great deal of organic waste and.
But they'd be all using the same trash enclosure?
Yeah, they'll still, they'll share the same trash enclosure. So there'll have to be some large dumpsters. But each business has to have its own three-can stream like you see here in City Hall in the common areas.
Okay. And then for the condition of approval, for the hours of operation, it says that, I guess, that the hours of operation could be between 6:30 a.m. and 11 p.m. on weekdays, and 7 to 1 a.m. on weekends. What are the proposed hours for this establishment?
Jay, would you like to answer that? I'm not sure what Starbucks.
So requirement of the tenant and the leases, we, we proposed its timings on that. And the other mainly business working times, we accommodated them.
So if I wanted to get a drive-through cup of coffee at 11 o'clock at night, would I be able to?
Yes, true.
And how late would I be able to get a cup of coffee?
I think what Jay is saying here is that the, I'm sorry, I'm an architect.
Yes.
The tenant, the tenant themselves, Starbucks will probably dictate, you know, the hours of operation. You know, it's going to be leased to Starbucks, right?
I just was wondering if it's going to be open late at night or early in the morning?
I think that's really up to the, the franchisee Starbucks, what they're going to actually, their hours of operation. But I can't see a Starbucks open, aren't too many of them open past 11 o'clock at night.
Being that it's a drive-through, it might serve those people.
Possibility, yeah, yeah. There is the hotel there. The hotel, you know, the good thing about the hotel is that it has the extra reserved parking. So during the daytime, where, you know, Starbucks is popular, you know, the hotel has a sea of empty parking spaces. So there's plenty of parking. Same thing for the office spaces on the second floor. You know, I think Jay has one tenant, you know, even though it's divided up in four spaces, is my understanding. But there's excess parking during the daytime, office spaces use parking in the parking lot when the most hotel guests are gone. So there shouldn't be an issue with parking. And as far as the hours of operation for the office space, usually even those are based on the tenant that's occupying the space of what they may occupy. There aren't too many office spaces open 24 hours, but maybe this might be, I don't know.
Sure. No, I realize that for the office spaces, I guess I'm more concerned about with hours I can get a cup of coffee. Being it's a main corridor, people are going to be wanting their coffee early in the morning. And this certainly offers that opportunity for people to get a cup of coffee early in the morning or late at night. If they close up at 5 o'clock, it seems like they'd be losing some business.
I believe if it's profitable for them, they'll be open, you know? That's really the key here. And if the demographics dictate to be open at 5:00 in the morning, for instance, they'll probably be open at 5:00 in the morning.
Okay. Because again, with the condition of, of approval, it does say that the hours should be considered between 6:30 and 11. So is, would we be making?
That's, if that's what's already written in there, that's what we're going to comply by.
Okay. Anyway, that's my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other commissioner questions? Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, staff and Jay. So a few questions, maybe for staff first. I, I think I read that the adjacent street, I believe SkyWest, we were going to change that with no parking signs. Is, am I correct in that?
Yes, that was a mitigation measure that came out of the traffic study. As you know, Starbucks drive-throughs can get pretty, pretty crowded at rush, morning rush hour, typically when everybody's on, wants to get their coffee on the way to work. And what the traffic study recommended was to prevent people from just backing out onto SkyWest Drive to red curb, like, something like 100. I forget what it is exactly, but maybe you saw. But a, a big segment of curb right before the entrance driveway from SkyWest into the, into the drive-through site, so that people won't just wait on SkyWest Drive for their turn to enter the queue. Now, that means that the queuing is going to have to occur within the site, but there's a lot of drive aisles here, there, everywhere, kind of around the back of the hotel. There's like a fire lane separating the hotel from the Starbucks. If worst-case scenario, there's, you know, dozens of cars waiting to their turn to get into that drive, they're going to have to negotiate it within the property. That's the reason for that no parking signage and red curbing along that, that segment of SkyWest Drive right before the driveway.
Oh, okay. Thank you. It, it appears like there's not a heck of a lot of traffic there. There's a lot of space there. I was concerned, maybe the worry was having long-term parking people with RVs, maybe?
That wasn't it at all. It was just to make sure that people don't wait on SkyWest Drive and block traffic.
Okay. And I think even with the sign, they're probably not going to listen, but at least there's a sign, right? Okay. And then the other thing is, so I used Google, let me, let me back up. So I am, I've flown with friends for years and recently started flying for my own license out of the Hayward Airport. And there's a thing called, you may have heard of, the $100 hamburger, which means it's just, that's how much it costs to fly to a, a fun airport and get a burger. I think nowadays, it's like a $300 burger. So it's kind of fun to think that we would have something for a destination for our pilots to come to Hayward. And I don't foresee them coming for a Starbucks. So what I did was I did Google Maps, and this is a question. This, I, I use Google Maps and I use their measuring tool, and it's a little over, I think, 10,000 square feet, that property. Is it possible? And, and does a code allow for a restaurant possibly to take up that space in the future if this was not approved?
Yes. A restaurant is a permitted use in the ATC district. A, a full-service sit-down style restaurant would not require a CUP.
Okay. I was, I was thinking the same thing. And it appears that the parking would accommodate that already based on the hotel's pre-planning. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Can I ask, what is of the Indian cuisine at the Winton Corridor? Is there a plan for a restaurant there? Or what's happening there?
Director Nguyen, do you know? It's been shuttered for a while, hasn't it? I, I haven't heard anything. I don't know if Planning Director LaKurko has heard anything. Paul would probably, Mr. Nguyen would be the one who would know best.
I, I hadn't heard anything either, but.
So that's one site where this could, another drive-through could get built, but they'd probably have to tear down that building or do a significant remodel of it.
Okay. That makes sense. And then, so do we know how many Starbucks we have in Hayward already? I, I, I think you figured that question was going to come up.
Said I don't know.
So I, I went on their website and I counted this would be the 16th. Does that sound about right?
That sounds a little high, but that might be right. I don't know the answer. I don't know if Paul.
They were the ones with the Hayward address, so. And then I went to the site and I did a map from my truck, and it showed this would be the sixth, I mean, the ninth one within a two-mile radius. I'm just wondering, does those numbers sound about right? Because that, that was my question.
I know there's like three or four within like a mile in either direction on Hasperian Boulevard. But just so the commission knows, staff isn't the one going out and trying to attract a Starbucks, right? Mr. Shah is, he was approached by the Starbucks Corporation. He, it's his idea, so to speak, but we, we're not going to discriminate against the Starbucks versus a McDonald's. but we're not going to discriminate against the Starbucks versus a McDonald's versus a In-N-Out or something like that.
Yes, okay, very good. That was all my questions, thank you.
Commissioner Gobody?
Thank you, Chair, thank you for that presentation. Steve, I have a question then for the applicant following up on Commissioner Myers. So if approved, this would be the fourth drive-through Starbucks in Hayward, and at this location, there are two Starbucks, two blocks to the north, so it would be in the Target, there's one Target, and then there's one next to the Takeria. And then, three blocks to the south of this location, there is one at the Walgreens, right next to the Walgreens. And so I wanted to ask the applicant, what was the, what drove the decision to put a Starbucks, a Starbucks drive-through rather than just a freestanding restaurant?
Yeah, we, we went through this feasibility, and we, we are the owner of another five courtyard by Marriott, and we have Starbucks inside the bistro, and that helps, helping the guest service in good ways. So we, we were thinking to put some coffee shop near the Hilton, and we discussed with the Hilton franchise, and they, they have, they support our ideas, yeah, just go ahead with the Starbucks, and it will be the complimentary supplementary to the, to the Hilton Hotel nearby. So the parcel available right next to the Hilton, and we approached the Starbucks, and they readily accepted that, yeah, this is the most feasible site for the Starbucks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lo?
Thank you, Chair. I can have a moment, I'm going to get to my questions. So at one point, we talked earlier about the parking issue, the parking spaces, and you were saying, staff, this is to staff, that there are plenty of, there's plenty of parking. I'm wondering, though, I assume, just like the owner or applicant would want to have, you know, lots of people going to Starbucks and, you know, that business to thrive, they expect their hotels to, their hotel to also fill up. If the hotel is full and the Starbucks is full, will there actually be the extra 40 parking spaces at the hotel and business park if they're, if the hotel is in use and the business park is also in use?
I'm the architect, do you want me to answer that?
If you'd like to, I'm looking.
Yeah, I guess I can jump in there, you know, because I design hotels across the United States, and we always talk about parking, you know, from the 70s and 80s, and, you know, with hotels, you have to look at that your guests are leaving in the morning, and during the daytime, they're fairly empty parking lots. So, the idea is not to actually create more paved surface area in the world, but actually to have a little less of it, right? So during the daytime, you look at your typical office user, they're going to be there from 8:00 in the morning to 5:00 o'clock, if you can get people to come to an office nowadays, right, during that time period. And the Starbucks user, I would say from earlier in the morning till the evening, but, you know, I think the key attribute to this particular Starbucks that's different than, you know, the other Starbucks's that are down around the corner, the one you had mentioned that was in the Target, not a lot of people want to stop to actually go inside Target to grab a Starbucks, as you probably know. The convenience of driving through with your car is a huge convenience. So if you look at how many people are actually going to park to go into Starbucks, you know, for a meeting space, it's probably not going to equate out to, I can't see more than the parking that's already provided for the Starbucks by itself. That's in addition to the hotel parking, so, because this is what they call a convenience Starbucks, it's kind of a third portion or third type of Starbucks that they talk about where you have the convenience of drive-through or you have the convenience of walking in the store. So if the line is extra long, people will park and then leave, of course, right? But, you know, when you look at the majority of traffic time periods, and there was a traffic study done, I believe, on this anyways, but the parking that's already available on the parking lot will be an absorbent amount of extra parking during those hours, so.
Thank you very much for answering my question, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
In the CED draft minutes on page three, Mayor Salinas expressed concerns that changing the zoning, the zoning here would open the floodgates to too many drive-throughs where we do not want them in our city. And my question to staff is, is there any reason why this should no longer be a concern for us?
So, as I, as I mentioned in the staff report there, I think there are nine parcels total that have the, this zoning that we're talking about tonight, and they're all developed, none of them are vacant right now, so if somebody like McDonald's wanted to come in, they would have to tear down an existing building and start from scratch. And we're, we're well aware that a lot of the city's leaders have expressed concern about the number of drive-throughs, we're just processing Mr. Shaw's application, it seems, what am I trying to say? I guess it's kind of up to you guys, if you feel that the community benefit is there to recommend approval of these zoning text amendments or not, all in the name of, you know, supporting another, another, construction of another drive-through and relaxing some zoning standards that might enable one or two more drive-throughs sometime in the, in the distant future to get built around the airport.
If I could just add on to that, I would just say, you know, that was a discussion that we had internally about the potential of maybe just creating a pathway more broadly with commercial districts, but that was not the direction that we received from CEDC. We were trying to really tailor this request to this specific zoning district, which is very small, so that way, to your point, Commissioner, we're not proposing to broaden it, and, and, you know, obviously, if we're going to change that citywide, we will need some additional direction from city council on how they would like to approach that. And I know we did make a couple of minor amendments to that several years ago, when it was really intended to encourage what you would typically find along auto thoroughfares, like 880, that's auto-oriented, and so a, a drive-through is completely appropriate, but a drive-through may not be appropriate in downtown where we're trying to create more pedestrian environment. So, again, it's trying to take not only a look at the policy, but also trying to understand why was the policy invented in the first place, or why were those prohibitions established in the first place? And this location off of Hesperian, obviously you have the airport there, you have a very number, a very low number of parcels that would be even, that would even qualify to do this, and even those, if one became available, as Steve had pointed out, they would be subject to the same discretionary review process that this applicant would be going through in front of, coming in front of the commission, and so you would have, ultimately, you would continue to have that discretion on a case-by-case basis. But we did have that conversation, and we thought that this was the best way to accommodate Hesperian, which also is a major thoroughfare through the community, as well as catering to some of the rest, some of the businesses and the air traffic that come in from the airport.
And then I noticed in the same report, the mayor said he would consider, reconsider his position if the applicant built a second story with offices, which the applicant has done, and provide a rooftop seating, and I didn't see that in the plans. Is that in the plans somewhere?
I don't believe that is. There does need to be room for solar panels on the rooftop, and I think the building, frankly, is probably too small to accommodate a rooftop deck, but they, we do have the two nice, and it's a nicely landscaped project, if you look at the landscape plans, there are going to be those two outdoor patio areas that are furnished with cafe tables and chairs, but I don't think the rooftop deck made it into the plans.
Just wondering, because I didn't see it, I just wanted to know.
It's a good catch, Commissioner.
Just wanted to know. And then, does the planning commission have any veto power, or say-so, or suggestibility power as it relates to the architecture of the Starbucks? I'm wondering that, because we, I'm trying to make sure I don't make a comment, because I'm supposed to just ask questions, but, so I guess that's my question, because I, when I look at it, and I, as I'm trying to evaluate whether or not it creates a benefit to the city, that is one of the things that we generally look at, and there's nobody here from Starbucks to talk about that. I assume there's a reason for that, and I just want to hear what that is.
I would just say, as a recommendation to council, if you want to recommend further architectural enhancements, that the council consider those when they're reviewing the text amendment and the use permit, which ultimately would be now pushed to them, that could be something that would be made as part of your, part of your recommendation.
Yeah, this isn't a housing project. You guys are probably accustomed to not being able to say very much about the design of housing projects anymore, but this is different, you can definitely request architectural improvements if you, if you deem necessary.
Great, I will. The, I think it's the last thing I wanted to ask about was security. I wanted to find out from the applicant, if you know, or staff, if you know what the security measures will be at this particular Starbucks.
At present also, we have 131-room hotel, and we have 24-wise, seven-security in the parking area. So we have the full hour, in-house security people for all, all days and all hours.
Will Starbucks have their own security in addition that's patrolling Starbucks as well, or will they be relying on your security?
Starbucks has, yeah.
And do you know anything more about their security?
Oh, no, we, we don't require it, because our, for the hotel, for the Hilton requirement, we are putting the, and we, we are also thinking to put the fence around, and we are just discussing with the airport authority and everybody to how much height we can do for the fence, and that also, we are thinking on that, and planning to put the fence around whole hotel and the Starbucks whole, whole parcel.
So the fence would go around the Starbucks and the hotel, is what you're saying?
Starbucks would be the part of that parcel where we will put the fence.
So, the fence would just go around your hotel, then?
No, no, it would be whole parcel, parcel contained the hotel and the Starbucks both.
Oh, that's what I was asking. Okay, so the fence will go around, and what does the fence look like?
We are just planning and thinking to put the fence with the construction of the Starbucks.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just interject, a fence would have to be, this is the first we've heard of any such fence, so the planning division would have to, and the building division would have to review that, the design of that fence, so, this is news to us. But Mr. Shaw, did you understand, you have your own private security around the hotel property? Do, will they also extend their service to the Starbucks?
Yes, we have our private security, which will take care of the Starbucks also, each one parcel.
Just one second, I want to make sure I got all my questions. I'm done. Thank you again, and thank you again for your presentation.
Yeah, there are commissioner questions? I have just three. Has Starbucks indicated that they're thinking about opening this location and closing one of those other ones that is very close by, that is not a drive-through?
I have not had any discussions with Starbucks representatives, I don't know if Mr. Shaw has, or Paul, oh, Mr. Nguyen, thank you.
Good evening, Paul Nguyen, Chief Economic Officer. No, in fact, we've received a number of inquiries. Starbucks is in a pretty aggressive growth mode, and they're looking to open more and more, given the consumer demand.
Thank you. Will the Starbucks have a say in what tenants are permitted in the upstairs offices, or is that totally going to be at the discretion of the applicant?
That would be the discretion of the, the lesssee of the building. The city owns the property, but the developer, whoever the landlord is of the, those tenant, office tenant spaces, would, I don't think Starbucks would have, that's just between them, sorry, we're not a party to that.
Okay. It does seem that this is a unique design, which was, I'm not aware of any other, like, at least standalone Starbucks that have a drive-through like this. I think, of course, there's some that are just commercial storefronts that have something above. Are you all aware of a model like this, and just the types of tenants that may even want to be above a drive-through? I imagine that could be a noise thing, or just, has there been any research into that yet?
There hasn't, perhaps the architect could, could attempt to answer.
I think Mr. Shaw has a potential tenant already that wants to be in the above location above the Starbucks, and I think it's really, when you really look at the square footage of it, it's a very small, 1,912 square feet, that's a very small tenant space, even as a single tenant. To the best of my knowledge, I believe that, you know, the lease for that tenant space has nothing to do with the Starbucks, so they're individual tenants, right? So, but I don't really see any, any, you know, multiple tenants going in there, because it would be too small of the office suite, so, and I think Mr. Shaw had conveyed tonight even that he has a tenant that he's in negotiations with, with a full space, so.
Yeah, Mr. Shaw, would you mind speaking to maybe that tenant? Does it look like they're going to be leasing that entire space potentially, and then what kind of business it is?
No, it's offices, and they're separate tenant, not one, one tenant.
Okay, and so it's just someone's personal use office space that they're considering?
No.
Okay, thank you. Not seeing any other commissioner questions. Do we have any public comments on this item?
There are none.
Great, thank you. So we will close public comments. Do any commissioners have comments? Commissioner Gobody?
Thank you, Chair. This is actually a question for staff. I'm concerned about the, the over, the proximity of all these Starbucks near each other. Does the commission have any way to recommend, if it's going to be a coffee shop, can we make a recommendation that the tenant, that the applicant look at other coffee establishments like Pete's, or Blue Bottle, or Dutch Bros, which is popular with the young, the younger crowd?
We don't really have the ability to, to select particular tenants. I think, as the applicant, I think as the architect pointed out, the clarification I thought that he made was, was pretty accurate, in that the, there are other Starbucks nearby, but they cater to different users, and so if you're going into Target, you would typically pick that up as you're going there, but Starbucks like this, with a drive-through, is mainly catering to those that are in their car and passing by, or maybe potentially that are staying at the hotel and just want to walk a couple steps without having to get in their car, to drive down the street to get that cup of coffee, so, you know, similar to a lot of businesses, obviously, but, yeah, and I love to see Blue Bottle, but I don't know that we have an option to pick and choose what tenants are. I would also say, too, that what we're really evaluating, even though it's a coffee shop, is we're looking at an individual use. So just as we're looking at a restaurant use, we don't, the planning commission and the city staff does not have the ability to select what kind of restaurant, if it just falls into that category, it would qualify, and in this case, it's a drive-through, and so as Steve had pointed out, this could be specific to drive-through for a coffee shop, but if there's a, if this happened to close, and there was another operator that wanted to go in there and operate either coffee shop or another restaurant within six months, they could, they could easily do that without having to come back, or they would need to come back to the commission if it were beyond that six-month period.
My family has stayed at the Home2 Suites, and, you know, I will say that, you know, we had to get in our car to go, you know, either to a restaurant at Southland, or, you know, a restaurant further down towards the. or, you know, a restaurant further down towards the San Lorenzo area. And it seems that a standalone restaurant would be a better use of the space next to a, next to the hotel when you have people coming from out of town. It's nice to just be able to leave your hotel room and go have dinner rather than get in your car and drive somewhere and go to dinner.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for your presentation and for staff's work on this. Excuse me, and I apologize for my coughing. So right now, there's nothing there, and what's proposed is mixed-use. I think mixed-use is wonderful. I'm a big advocate for mixed-use projects. There's currently no real trees there, so we're going to be adding trees. I think that's a positive. And looking at the architectural layout and the design, I have to say I'm pretty impressed with the way it looks. I particularly like the layout. And I know the city needs revenue, or I know that this would help the city with revenue. With all that said, I look at it as an analogist. If you're a single person in a home, a small home, and you're looking for a roommate, you need that money to pay your rent. It would be great to have a tenant there for the income. But what you do as a roommate is you really find the best use or the best person that would fit the characteristics of who you are, your environment, and the same should be said with the city as well. With this possibly being maybe the 16th Starbucks, I know that Starbucks in the past has had mass closings. I would hate to have all of our eggs, that many eggs, in one basket. If they should have some mass closings, you know, who knows what's going to happen, then I foresee a potential for boarded-up buildings here and there. As I mentioned, $300 hamburger. I think a restaurant would better suit the airport, would also better suit the hotel. And based on the dimensions, it appears that there's enough space. I know we don't have anybody wanting it right now, but that's like a roommate thing. You know, I wouldn't jump at the first person offering to pay half my rent if they weren't a good fit. I know Starbucks has kind of a business plan of having a lot of Starbucks, and they claim, and it's probably partially true, that it helps with climate because you're not parking at a bunch of places, you're in and out faster. But I also think that they have an overall plan to stifle competition, and I know that for our local businesses, I don't want to see that. I do appreciate the design and the space, just I will not be supporting this today. Thank you.
Commissioner Lo?
16 Starbucks is a lot of Starbucks. It's a lot of Starbucks, and to have so many in such a short space. I know that one of our neighboring cities, my daughter was saying the other day, "Good Lord, the whole city is just one gigantic Starbucks." And I would prefer that Hayward not become one gigantic Starbucks. That's just my personal preference as somebody who lives here and who pays taxes here. I prefer not to just be in a giant Starbucks. And so when I look at the public benefit, I see, I understand that people would prefer not to get out of their cars and have that benefit of being able to drive up, and I think that is a benefit for sure, to be able to not get out of your car and just pull up and get your coffee and go. I am concerned, though, if it's enough of a value add to the city overall, because to me, a value add to the city should be something fresh, new, different, exciting, something that draws people. I don't see it as a draw. I just see it as anybody going to work will just stop there because it's convenient, which is very different than a draw to the city or a value add to the city. I'm really not overwhelmingly excited about it, but I also don't hate it. I get the point that it, that people, some people will benefit from it. I just, I'm struggling with whether or not there's enough value add to the city. In addition, I, unlike my colleague, I actually do not like the design. I think it looks like all the others. There's nothing new about this one. Like if there's...I understand the newness is that it's a drive-through, but there's nothing new, unique about this one. And this company has so much money. They could bring something really new, unique, and exciting to the city if they really want it to. There's the Starbucks Reserve in Chicago that is gorgeous, and I'm not talking about...I know we wouldn't build it on, they wouldn't build it on that scale here, but gosh, it shows how if a city really, let's say, gently encourages Starbucks to make something unique, different, something that's attractive, they will do it because they've done it. And it worries me or kind of upsets me a little that I am more impressed with the architecture of a data center than I am with the architecture of the Starbucks. So from my standpoint, I'm just not 100% convinced of the value add to the city.
Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you. So when we started this exercise, because there were some questions, I thought I would run a little AI test, and I thought I'd ask my friends in AI about Starbucks in Hayward. And this is not the free version, this is the paid version, and this is the deep research version. So it took about 15 minutes to come up with this market research analysis. So there are 10 Starbucks that are company-owned, and there are four that are, you know, part of a, like a grocery store or something else. So there's 14 Starbucks in Hayward. And if you look at the national averages, right now, if another Starbucks goes in, there'll probably be a higher concentration of Starbucks here than they are statewide or the national average. But I think this makes a really good point about Starbucks' strategy, about concentrating in high-traffic areas and high-commute areas. And if we think about how this site is in the city, and we think about Hisparian Boulevard as a principal commute corridor, and it is near the Hayward Airport, to me, the concentration of Starbucks in this location makes reasonable business sense. This is a free economy that we live in. If Starbucks wants to make the investment here, I think it makes perfect sense. So I am in complete support of this initiative.
Thank you. Commissioner Hammond?
Yes. So yeah, it's a very interesting conversation. So in general, I am, I'm all for approving changes in the text amendments and in the conditional use permit and changing for the zoning. Maybe I'm a little bit concerned about having a Starbucks, but again, it is a free-market economy, and if Starbucks thinks that they can make and go at it in another location, I guess that's all they're right. And if, from what I can tell, nobody else has come forward to do something with that piece of property. I do like that piece of property, or the fact that they would be putting something like this on that, on that piece of property. I like that it's a mixed-use. It's just a good use for the site. Even though there are already two other Starbucks in the vicinity, I believe that this location probably serves the community a little bit better than the one that's located at Target or the one on, close to it, on Winton, in that it would have a better seating capacity, maybe a little bit more of an atmosphere to have your coffee. And also, I think that the drive-through is a good idea for that, for that corridor. So I would have to say that I'm probably in favor of it, even though I would maybe like to see perhaps some other competition come in and make a go at it. But nobody that I've talked to so far has given me any reason to think that they wouldn't want another Starbucks. So anyway, those are my comments.
Thank you. And I will just add my comments as well. So I want to see the hotel be successful. If this is something that the hotel owner feels is going to keep that business thriving, and we won't see that shut down, I feel like that is a consideration also for public benefit. I see this as a model similar to the Fairfield Inn and Suites Starbucks drive-through that's down on Industrial Boulevard, seems to always be busy, it's near a hotel, it's near the freeway. So I could see how these would work, being next to each other, not just necessarily a sit-down restaurant. I also just want to point out that there are two vacant restaurants really close by. We talked about the Raja Indian Cuisine on Winton, which seems that it's not open anymore. It says it's temporarily closed, but I haven't seen it open in a very long time. And then the Elephant Bar at Southland Mall, that building has been there vacant for, I believe, years now. So I'm concerned that if we don't do this, because we're holding out for a sit-down restaurant, that we may just end up having nothing there with the hotel, and that could impact the hotel. And we want to keep the hotel and have that be thriving as well. I do agree that that's a lot of Starbucks. I actually do think that this is a better location also, as Mr. Hammond said, than definitely...I mean, the one in the Target, that serves a different purpose, but the standalone one next to the Walgreens, I suspect many people who currently go to that one may begin going to this one if it's approved. And then we would have to see if Starbucks actually keeps that open as well. So that may be something more to think about, like the potential of a, even though they're in a growth model, like is there really supply and demand that necessitates another one? If there is, then it'll be fine, but that's yet to be seen. So the one other point I made was, I wanted to make was that I really did like the signage that they were going to add, even though I don't necessarily think the architectural design is anything special, but I did think that the sign that was specific to Hayward was a nice touch. And those are my comments. Are there any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Myers?
Well, thank you. The only other things I hadn't mentioned earlier were, I'm concerned with the small square footage of the four units on top. If it's not taken by one person, then you're probably looking at somebody with little capital, maybe startups, starting their own little business, and there's probably going to be a lot of turnaround, I fear, and maybe possibly some boarded-up windows. And if it does overtake this Starbucks, if it does overtake one of the other Walgreens, now we have that vacancy there. So that was the other trepidations that I had. Thank you.
Commissioner Hammond?
Yes, just a couple more comments. I did want to say that I appreciate the thought given to the landscaping and the trees and to the separation of the trash. But to echo the concerns of previous meetings, I'm concerned about the traffic and the litter generated around a drive-through restaurant, and that means any of them. Although they're included in the condition of approval, I hope that after the certificate of occupancy has been issued, that it won't become a forgotten item.
Thank you. Are there any other commissioner comments? Do we have a motion on this item?
I would make a motion to approve this item, and I guess I'm struggling...when I look at the architecture of it, I think it's well-balanced. I think it's integrated with the site. I guess I don't, I don't understand. I mean, I'd love to hear what the concerns are with the architecture of it. I mean, it seems, it almost seems natural. I mean, maybe I'm totally missing something, and I'm usually the critic, so I'd love to hear more feedback about it.
I think you're directing that at me?
Well, I've heard two folks say that they had concerns about the architectural feel of the building, and I just thought that we should put it on the record what our issue is.
Yeah, I just said what, I think I said what I believe, which is there are, when I looked at the, for example, just as an example, the one in Chicago, it is unique, it is different, it is interesting, and it brings some sort of...it's just, it's different and interesting. And I feel like this, it looks like it's just trying to look like the hotel to me. And I understand maybe that is the goal because it's next to the hotel and it's a part of the hotel. Maybe that is the goal. I'm just saying for me, I don't really think it's the sort of thing that you can quantify because it's a personal preference based upon what I think would add value. So that's just my personal opinion.
Can I make a suggestion? When I look at the, I believe it's the south facade, there's a funny little sign on it. And the sign scale seems incorrect. It says Hayward Aviation on it. Is that really...I'm sorry, but is that a logo that is readily used?
If the architect could answer that question. I was wondering the same.
Yeah, it just says Hayward on it. I think there's an airplane flying through it, but I don't know if that's your logo or how that came about. But, you know, the massing on this is much more proportioned to scale, to human scale, unlike the call center, whatever you got going there, the other big building. I mean, this scale on this is only 20-some feet tall. It's almost like a couple ADA residential units put together. You know, I think the architecture, too, is not like any other Starbucks. The facade's broken up, the two-story section, which makes it more of a mixed-use look, is broken up. The color scheme, these are the in-colors. I do a lot of work with Marriott Hotels. They spend, you know, I don't think, $3 or $4 million a year on color schemes, and these are the primary colors that people like and enjoy, and they're very long-lasting. So I think just looking at this as a Starbucks, like a run-of-the-mill versus the one in Chicago, which I've been to, too, this has, this has outdoor seating area with, you know, umbrellas and things like that. So it's, I think, you know, eye-appealing with the landscaping, the facade broken up so much. I don't think you get any, any developer to actually, you know, invest so much in such a small little building here. And it's not, it's basically, you know, 2,000 square foot footprint, and I think the second floor is 2,000 roughly, too. So it's such a small footprint, it's a blink of an eye as you drive by, right? So, so at the end of the day, you know, between the color schemes and the architectural facade, it's not, it's not anything like...well, the color schemes are probably very close to other Starbucks stores, but ideally here, I think the architecture went above and beyond what your typical developer would do, and the cost per square foot is probably, you know, higher than your call center you're doing down the road, all because the amount of small scale that this is at, the cost for construction is very high. So I think, you know, Mr. Shaw, of course, put in a lot of extra effort here and money into this design to get it to be appealing. So I kind of disagree with the architecture thoughts here, but everybody does have their own opinions, which is good.
So I would, I would continue to make my motion. I'm still unclear about this sign that's on the side of this building.
I think the sign, and the architect can correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was just a gesture. They are required to do a sign on the building, and if this is not what the logo of the Hayward Executive Airport, if this is not the airport's logo, then we, our airport staff will inform the architect what the proper logo is, and they'll have to put that sign on the exterior.
So to clarify, the building is to be branded with the Hayward Airport's logo?
That's correct.
Okay. Then I would continue my motion to recommend this.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Hammond?
I'll second.
Great. Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor and a second. Ms. Allen, can you please call roll?
Commissioner Franco Clausen, absent. Commissioner Goodbody?
No.
Commissioner Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Lo?
No.
Commissioner Myers?
No.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Chair Hardy?
Yes.
So I am going to look to our city staff to see what we do with a tie.
So if there's, if it's a tie, then it would just be a neutral recommendation to council?
Great, thank you.
Or no recommendation, actually.
No recommendation. Okay. So thank you to staff, thank you applicant for being here.
Thank you very much.
All right. So we will move on to approval of the Planning Commission meeting minutes from November 14, 2024.
I move to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Great. Can we have a vote?
Commissioner Franco Clausen, absent. Commissioner Goodbody?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Lo?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Chair Hardy?
Yes. We will now move on to our Commission reports. Mr. LaKierko, do you have a report for us?
Just one quick announcement, which is that we do have one item scheduled for the June 12 Planning Commission meeting, and it is consideration on a recommendation to council on the tree preservation ordinance update that staff has been working on. Right now, we don't currently have anything scheduled for the June 26 meeting, but I will update the Commission on the meeting on the 12th, whether or not that meeting will actually happen. So you can plan your summer.
Thank you. Are there any Commissioner reports? Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Chair. So starting tomorrow night, for, I believe, two weekends, Mount Eden High School is doing their version of Lion King. It's at the new Performing Arts Center, right next to Mount Eden High. So just tickets are cheap, and I think we should support our students, and we're going to be there, and just recommend everybody go. Thanks.
Thank you for that. My granddaughter would love to see it. Are there any other Commissioner reports? Not seeing any. So with that, our next meeting again is scheduled for June 12, and this meeting is adjourned at 10:16 PM.
Recording stopped.